Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Regular Council Meeting. Council meetings can be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Members of the public may also attend the meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams. Just as a note too for here, if you're here to speak on the item regarding to the General Plan 2050, please know that you will have an opportunity to speak when I introduce that item, which is Item 8B1 later on the agenda. The City Council will need to complete the other items of business leading up to Agenda Item 8B1, so we just appreciate your patience. If you wish to speak on the General Plan 2050 and you haven't filled out a speaker card yet, please make sure to check in at the table in the back to fill out and submit your completed card prior to the Agenda Item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. That brings us to Item Number Two, which is a moment of silence. If you're willing and able, please join me in standing for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Tonight's agenda has a number of items that the City Council must consider in order to conduct city business. Guidelines for conduct at City Council meetings are on the table near the entrance for those in attendance at tonight's meeting. We will now play a video with the proper protocol for ensuring the appropriate conduct at City Council meetings.
The City of Tempe welcomes public comment at this time. Disruptive behavior will not be allowed. Continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. We need to be able to hear everyone in the room. Behavior that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any City Council meeting is not helpful and is not permitted. This includes behavior both inside and outside of the council chambers. Should individuals inside the council chambers become disruptive so that city business is not able to be conducted, the mayor will first ask that the individuals allow city business to be completed. There will be time for public comment during the call to the audience portion of the meeting. If no cooperation, the mayor will issue a verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is still no cooperation, the mayor will issue a second verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is no cooperation after asking and two verbal warnings, then the mayor will ask security officers to remove only those individuals who are causing the disruption. Security personnel should not engage in any way but only escort them from the council chambers. If individuals refuse to leave, security personnel shall warn them that they are trespassing and that the next step will be arrest by a Tempe police officer. Tempe officers may have to arrest if individuals refuse to leave. Charges for trespass and disorderly conduct may apply, as well as other charges. Should anyone be asked to be removed, the mayor will recess the meeting.
And for the record, I do not consider the cellphone that just went off disruptive behavior, so. Just want to make sure that happens to all of us. Councilmember Keating, I know you're next with the meeting minutes. I was going to ask you, do you have the native land acknowledgement statement in front of you?
Yes, Mayor, I do.
Okay, sure. If you want to start with that, then move on to the meeting minutes. That'd be great.
Absolutely. We wish to acknowledge that Tempe is the homeland to the native people who inhabited this landscape since time immemorial. These ancestral lands of the Odom, known as Pima, Peepash, known as Maricopa, and their ancestors extend far beyond our city. This land continues to be spiritually connected to the Odom of the Salt River, Pima, Maricopa Indian Community and the Gila River Indian -- excuse me, the Gila River Indian Community. We accept responsibility of stewarding those places and solemnly pledge to consider this commitment in every action. With that, Mayor, I move we approve Items A -- excuse me, 4A, 1 through 3.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Keating. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please vote.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
And that item passes seven to zero. Next up, Councilmember Keating, Item 4B.
Yes, Mayor. I move we approve Items 4, B, 1 through 5, Mayor.
It's been moved by Councilmember Keating. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Garland. Please vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And that item also passes seven to zero. Okay, that brings us here to Item Number Five, Reports and Announcements. First up are mine. So I have, first of all, 5A1, which is a Child Support Awareness Proclamation. And I'm going to invite Christian Romo up front to accept from DES. All right, so this proclamation reads, "Whereas developing a robust youth talent pipeline in the City of Tempe contributes to the overall economic growth and well-being of the city and its residents; and whereas the state of Arizona will always be committed advocates for our children whose safety and security remains top of mind; and whereas a child who receives emotional and financial support is more likely to feel safe and secure and is better equipped with the courage to be their very best in life; and whereas the Department of Economic Security, Division of Child Support Services, is robustly committed to putting Arizona's children first and to humbly serving Arizonans with excellence, respect, integrity, and kindness, as well as being an overall champion for economic growth and opportunity; and whereas DCSS strongly advocates for parenting responsibilities because parents and children benefit when both are engaged with their child at every stage regardless of marital status; and whereas DCSS recognizes the commitment of legal guardians who accept responsibilities of children in the absence of parents; and whereas strengthening individuals and families with an emphasis on fiscal responsibility promotes the safety and well-being of children, provides stability, improves the lives of children, and provides opportunities for families to be able to enhance their children's future; and whereas Child Support Awareness Month values parents' involvement in their children's lives and who make regular child support payments to safeguard their children's future. Now therefore, I, Corey Woods, Mayor of the City of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare August 2023 as Child Support Awareness Month in Tempe, Arizona." All right, next up, Item 5A2. Just want to congratulate Jesse Shank on his appointment to the mayor's library advisory board. Next up, Item 5B, City Managers' Reports and Announcements. Madam City Manager.
Nothing for this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. That brings us to Public Appearances, Item Number Six. According to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the City Council may only discuss matters listed elsewhere on this agenda for discussion and legal action. The purpose of the open call to the public is to allow individuals to address the City Council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the City Council. No person shall speak more than once, and there is a limit of three minutes per speaker. Speakers present at the podium must state their name and city of reference and provide a speaker card. Members of the public shall refrain from making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks and from becoming boisterous while addressing the City Council or while attending the meeting. Speakers will be taken first come, first served in the order in which the cards are received. Speakers' visual aids and appearances by phone or recordings are not allowed. Council members are prohibited by state law from taking action on, commenting, or discussing a matter raised by a member of the public, even if asked to do so by a member of the public, so long as the subject discussed by the speaker is not listed as a specific Agenda Item for council's consideration for discussion and legal action. At the conclusion of public appearances, the council may ask the city manager to review a matter or place a matter on a future agenda. So under Public Appearances, I have one card this evening. Once again, all the other cards for the General Plan are under Item 8B1. But the other public appearance I have this evening is Joseph Kepfer. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
All right. Joseph Kepfer, City of Tempe. So, hey, Council, Mayor Woods, hi, Rosa. So I'm here once again to address the situation in the City of Tempe, in the alleys. Over the past year and a half, I've been in communication with various individuals throughout the city in regards to the atrocities happening within the alleys, specifically behind my house. In that time, I personally witnessed, you know, drug use in my shed. I've sent you guys all the video of someone doing heroin in my shed, theft, and large amounts of dumping. I've even almost stuck myself with a needle while trying to clean up the dumping that's happened in my alley. Just last week, you know, there was someone in the alleys. He was clearly on drugs. He actually ended up stealing my neighbor's bike. Luckily, PD was there to stop that. So also, over the past five weeks, I've had to pick up trash that was strewn all over my alley and move it to the dumpster. You know, it's far past time that we take action on these alleys. Scottsdale in particular has started moving all trash collection from the alley to curbside and has reported making the alleys cleaner and a safer space. They've also reduced the number of complaints related to excessive garbage in the alley, and they've even reduced the amount of damage and wear to the city vehicles that are picking up the trash. Phoenix has also begun gating their alleys. Recently, a one-year satisfaction survey was taken from the results. This is directly from Stacy Buell, who's a project manager of Neighborhood Services for the City of Phoenix. She said all respondents to the survey provided positive feedback, noting they felt their properties are better protected and safety improved with the gates. Of the residents surveyed, no fires or graffiti were reported in the years since the alleys were gated. All but one reported no illegal dumping. All but one reported no encampments, and all but two reported no criminal activity. Even those who did report these activities noted a decrease in activity since the gates were installed. In 2021, roughly 1,100 calls for service were initiated for alley complaints in Tempe. If we just say an average of 30 minutes per call, that's 550 hours of police response that's required over a year to the alley specifically. If we consider the numbers from Phoenix, that could turn to two and a half hours a year. I want to stress that this alley stuff is not a policing situation, right? You can't send more police at this. There needs to be action from the city. And, you know, if you can reduce that to two and a half hours, you're saving the police that amount of time responding to that, and they can respond to more important calls other than listening to me complain about things. So, you know, I'm here to ask for you guys to do something. Get something in the books. Get something started. And I'll close with this thought. You know, why is a city known for its innovation falling so far behind other cities? I mean, Tempe is supposed to be known for its innovation. Why are we falling behind Phoenix and Scottsdale? Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Kepfer. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak under Public Appearances tonight on an item not related to the General Plan? If so, please get my attention. Okay, seeing that I'll close that portion of the meeting. That'll take me to Item Number Seven, which is the Consent Agenda. All items listed on the Consent Agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the City Council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated as public hearing item at the beginning of the item title. Council members may remove any item for separate consideration or to declare a conflict of interest. If a council member would like to declare a conflict at this time, the city clerk will provide the council member with the disclosure form. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a speaker card and submit your completed card to the city clerk prior to the Agenda Item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. This evening, the Consent Agenda is listed as miscellaneous items 7A1 through 7A5, awards of bids and contracts, Item 7B1 through 7B13, and resolutions, Item 7C1 through 7C5. Once again, any Agenda Item designated as public hearing item can be removed by a member of the public for separate consideration. If anyone in the audience would like to have a public hearing item removed, please get my attention now. Okay, seeing none, I will look to the council. Actually, I'll ask first our clerk. Were there any comments received from the public wishing to address the City Council on a Consent Agenda public hearing item?
Nothing for Consent Agenda.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Then I'll look to the council. Anything you'd like to have removed for separate consideration?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Hodge. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Garland. Please vote.
Yes.
Councilmember Var? Do you want to vote? Okay, and that item passes seven to zero. All right, next up then, we're going to move then to Item Eight, Nonconsent Agenda. All items on the nonconsent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Council members who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on a matter, and the city clerk will provide the council members with the disclosure form at this time. First up, we have Item 8A, Miscellaneous Items, Bids, Contracts, and Resolutions. First item is to 8A1, to approve an increase to the contract amount with 55 qualified trade service contractors to provide building repair and maintenance services. Council, any comments or discussion? Seeing none, do I have a motion? Been moved by Councilmember Garland, seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote.
Yes.
And that item passes seven to zero. Next up, Item 8A2, approve the utilization of a one-year state of Arizona cooperative contract with Premise One LLC for the purchase, installation, and maintenance of building security systems. Council, any comments or discussion?
So moved.
So moved by Councilmember Hodge, seconded by Councilmember Garland. Please vote.
Yes.
And that item also passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8A3, which is to approve a two-year contract renewal with High Tech Network and Security Solutions LLC to provide Cisco networking and voice-over Internet protocol equipment and services. Council, any comments or discussion?
So moved.
Been moved by Vice Mayor Adams. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Navarro. Please vote.
Yes.
That item passes seven to zero. Next item under the section is 8A4, which is to approve the utilization of a Sourcewell Cooperative Contract with E1 Incorporated for the purchase of three-engine pumper apparatus for the Tempe Fire Medical Rescue Department. Council, any comments or discussion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Hodge. I think it was seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. Please vote.
Yes.
Councilmember Chin? That item was approved, seven to zero. The last item under the section is 8A5, which is to award three-year contracts with two one-year renewal options to Sapphire Gas Solutions LLC as the primary contractor and to Applied LNG Technologies LLC as the secondary contractor for the supply of liquefied natural gas to support the city's transit and fleet operations. Council, any comments or discussion? It's been moved by Councilmember Garland, seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote.
Yes.
That item also passes seven to zero. The next section of the nonconsent agenda is ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be ready to introduce tonight, but no votes will be taken. The second hearing and vote for these items is scheduled for August 24, 2023. First item under the section is 8B1, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt a resolution authorizing the approval of Tempe tomorrow, General Plan 2050, an update to the General Plan 2040. The applicant is the City of Tempe. Let me do this here before I do the presentation with staff. I'd like to make sure, because I know we started a little late, that we can get to all the people in the audience here, if that's okay with staff. So I've got a number of cards here, and I'm just going to, once again, read these in the order in which I receive them. And just as I said, I get more. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, so the first speaker, I should say, is David Sokolowski. Mr. Sokolowski, can you hear me? Let's see. Mr. Sokolowski, can you hear me? Madam Clerk, is he elevated as a panelist or? Let me do this while working in that. I'm sure he's here, because David, I know, does show up. Let me move to the next speaker then, just to make sure. So the next speaker I have is Franklin Zyrick. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Woods, Vice Mayor Adams, and Councilmembers. My name is Franklin Zyrick, and I represent myself. I have spent the vast majority of my life in Tempe. I attended public schools in Tempe, including CI Wagner Elementary, Kyrene Middle School, Marcos Niza High School, graduated from the Tempe Youth Leadership Program, and served on the mayor's Youth Advisory Commission. I'm here tonight because I care about my city and community. I have concerns about the 2050 general plan as written. I ask you to direct city staff to go back to the character area assessments to see what residents in each part of Tempe want for their communities, especially for the South Tempe Corona character area where I grew up and currently live. Please do not impose types of development that will negatively affect the quality of life of Tempe residents. South Tempe residents have no desire for additional high occupancy dwellings, even at the 25 dwelling units per acre level. Why? Well, let's look at the city's website. It states in reference to the character area assessment and the 2040 general plan, what's quote, "more important than numeric change," read, "increase in population," is Tempe's ability to maintain sustainable and livable communities. High-density housing development in South Tempe will pose an obstacle to those goals. Residents in South Tempe know the type of development that is best for their community. In an area with mostly single-family homes, where you can still occasionally see children riding their horses to school, high-density development is not appropriate. No high-rise development should negatively affect traffic flows or tower over a longtime Tempe resident who has paid off their mortgage. I recognize that other parts of Tempe have developed a consensus in favor of high-density development. That's great. All I ask is that you honor the voices of residents, encourage high-density development where residents have requested it, and prohibit the expansion of high-density development in parts of the city that don't want it. In closing, I want to point out an example of what we don't want Tempe to become. I lived in Bethesda, Maryland for work before moving back to Tempe earlier this year. Zoning laws in Bethesda allow high-rise apartment and office buildings to literally be across the street from single-family homes. You can look it up on Google Maps. We don't want a 20-story building towering over our homes or schools. Please remove high-density development from the South Tempe Corona character area, especially in locations like the Discovery Business Campus, where the developer doesn't even want to put in housing units. Thank you for allowing me to share my views.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, next, I think Mr. Sokolowski is unmuted, so I'm going to go back to him. Mr. Sokolowski, can you hear me? Let's see. Mr. Sokolowski, can you hear me? Do we still see him in the queue?
Yes, he's still there, and he raised his hand earlier, and he's unmuted, so I'm not sure why we can't hear him.
Okay. Jason, everything good on your end? All right, I'll try one more time here. Mr. Sokolowski, can you hear me? All right. Let me then move to my next speaker. If he stays in the queue, we'll see if we can get him in for the end of the night. That will bring me to my next speaker, which is Kendon Young. And I think Kendon is virtual this evening? Kendon, can you hear me? Okay, I'm concerned there's something going on with the virtual system, but I think these people are here, so.
Mayor, I don't see him on the list, the audience list.
Okay. All right, I'm going to go. But we do see Mr. Sokolowski in the audience list.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, let me do this then. I'm going to just circle these, just in case. Let me go to my next speaker then, who's here in person, Joe O'Rourke. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes. Just want to make sure everyone has an opportunity tonight.
All right, good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to go first. My name is Joe O'Rourke. I live in Tempe, and I hope to still be living in Tempe in 2050 when this general plan comes into fruition. I'm worried that some of the feedback you've gotten on the general plan is a bit misanthropic, speaking generally, maybe exaggerating a little. I feel like some people wouldn't mind if the Marvel supervillain Thanos came and snapped Arizona's growing population out of existence. But I think we should be proud that Tempe is a great city where a lot of people want to live. We should be happy that ASU is a world-class university that's expanding enrollment. Expanding access to higher ed is good for the city. It's good for the state. It's good for democracy. We should also be proud that Tempe has great employers, big and small, who attract people who want to work here from all over. It's a fact that no matter what you do in the general plan, lots of people will still want to live in Tempe. The choice is what we do about that. I think we should steal a line from the ASU charter and judge the greatness of Tempe not based on who we exclude, but by who we include. I think we all know what will happen if we artificially cap our housing supply. The affordability crisis will get worse and worse. Prices will continue to skyrocket. Homelessness will get worse. Water usage per capita will rise, and people will have to drive into Tempe from the hinterlands of the metro area. Likewise, virtually every academic study I've ever read agrees on the simple point that adding market-rate housing will lower the cost of housing in a metro area and usually in the immediate vicinity of that new housing. So if the general plan is supposed to be a vision, a foundation for our city's future, let's build a foundation not on an artificial housing supply, but on housing abundance. I urge you to prioritize housing, transit, walkability. I think you know that if we add more housing by adding density, shrinking cultural resource areas, there will be a virtuous cycle. Mass transit will get more efficient because there'll be a critical mass near the light rail and streetcar and buses. Water usage per capita will go down. People won't have to drive as far. People will be able to walk, bike, take other forms of transportation. And if we do need to subsidize affordable housing for people, however many dollars Tempe has socked away to help people, we'll be able to help more people. So I feel like we have a choice really between sort of despairing that people want to live here and hope. I urge you all to build a general plan that is focused on hope. I want you to trust this city, trust that we can welcome new neighbors, trust that as we grow, as we inevitably change, as we inevitably build our systems to deal with all the changes that will come in the next few decades, that we can do it with more people. Take the pro-human stance, increase density where you can if you make any changes to the general plan, and let's build a great city where people want to live and can live. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Right out of the wire. No clapping, no clapping. Just got to get through all the comments. The next speaker I have is virtual, Ben Williams.
Mayor, I just tried to make David Sokolowski presenter to see if that'll work.
Okay.
And we'll be able to hear him. I'm not sure if that's going to work.
Let's try that. Hopefully, third time's the charm. Mr. Sokolowski, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
All right, there we go. Perfect. Yes, sir. Please state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Okay, my name is David Sokolowski. I live in Tempe. Tempe is landlocked, and if the city is trying to protect neighborhoods from development, the best thing you can do is promote high density. We want more park space, and Tempe should look to Vancouverism for best practices. Tempe should increase its density near Elliott and Priest to high density so we can get all of the co-benefits like park space. This area is served by five bus routes, and within one mile, there is a Costco, a Walmart, an Ikea, a Lifetime Fitness, a post office, and 18 restaurants. Some people have said that density will make Tempe dystopian. But if you want an example of a dystopian city, look at San Francisco. 10 years ago, the rents cost 1,000 a month, but today it costs 3,000 a month. The city is overwhelmed because homelessness, drugs, and crime are rampant. That's exactly what it's going to be like in Tempe. We already see the early warning signs. The city is undercounting its need for housing. We should contribute 30,000 units to Arizona's housing shortage to support the jobs we already created, plus 40,000 units to support 83,000 new jobs. I don't know why the general plan is using 10-year-old data, but prices have doubled since 2013, and Tempe will probably need 30,000 low-income units. If Tempe is planning to add 30,000 new units, at least a portion of those needs to be low-income to support population growth. The City of Tempe would need to build 100% affordable housing for 30 years. In total, our city needs to build more like 100,000 units. Tempe supports inclusionary zoning policy, and it will not be an effective policy without increasing the density in certain locations. and it will not be an effective policy without increasing the density in certain locations. The number of affordable units needs to be greater than the number of families becoming cost burden by rent. If cities like Tempe expect to retain local control, it's important to demonstrate we are capable of solving the housing crisis. Denell Plaza is a great example. By the time you build 100 affordable units, at least 100 families will be cost burdened by rent before you finish construction. It's important to point out there are five schools within one mile of Denell Plaza that could benefit from affordable housing. If it quacks like a duck, then it's a duck. And NIMBYs always say, "I'm not against affordable housing, but we shouldn't because of X, Y, and Z." We need to leverage Denell Plaza to the best of our ability because it needs to support my neighborhood for 30 years more. We're not planning for the next generation, and we're not planning for seven more. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, I just got a note from staff that I believe Kendon Young is now in the queue. Is Kendon there? All right. Kendon, can you hear me? Okay, Kendon, can you hear me?
There we go.
Oh, there you go. All right, well, please state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Kendon Young, City of Tempe, for 32 years. And if climate change doesn't kill me, technology will. So thank you for bearing with me as I work through all of the tech bits. But hello, Mayor and Council. Thank you for reviewing the 2050 general plan. I encourage you to vote to approve, and here's why. The community has voiced on numerous occasions that it is important for sustainability to be throughout this document, and it is. The Sustainability and Resiliency Commission approves of this plan in a memo sent to you all, and a member of the commission has been deeply involved in the early stages of its development. Staff has gone to significant lengths to embed action-oriented language for sustainability, underscoring the urgency of the journey ahead of us. And concessions have already been made. Density is in the right places and at appropriate levels. Considering any retractions would be a step backwards. We have seen the hottest 38 days on record globally over the past 38 days. This plan is what we need in this moment in time. So please approve the general plan for 2050. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, next up, we're going to go back to another virtual speaker, Ben Williams. Is Ben in the queue? All right, Ben, can you hear me? Ben, can you hear me?
Good evening.
Good evening. Yes, please state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Ben Williams, the Broadmoor neighborhood. I've listened to the discussion with an open mind and know that there are grievances from the past. Let's set the past aside for a moment and look through today's lens together. Metro Phoenix has grown tenfold from 600,000 when my home was built in 1962 to 6 million. Now, Tempe is near the heart of the seventh-largest metro in the nation. Recently, the new high-rise office towers have lured top companies from downtown Phoenix, making us a desirable urbanization center. A high-density, mixed-use transition from downtown to 65 and up per acre on streets like Broadway and Southern appears sensible for the flow when looking down at Tempe from above. Without meaningfully increasing this transition density, we'll never reach our aspiration to achieve desirable walkability and with a sustainable footprint. Let's discuss how to add density, not whether to do it. The transition from downtown must reach our single-family home zone neighborhoods. And I want to challenge an argument against increased density, that young families need space. In 1960, the average family was 3.7. Now it's 3.1, and household size is only 2.5. Our homes were zoned for large families, but that last-century reality is no longer a reality today. We don't need so much space. This is coming from me and my wife as a family of seven with two baby boys under two. My family and I can attest that denser living fosters stronger relationships and well-being. Smaller homes and smaller rentals are also more affordable and environmentally friendly. As part of urbanizing, we can address housing affordability. To do so, we must modernize single-family home zoning, following California and cities like Austin and Phoenix by scrapping outdated zoning language for that which empowers homeowners to build added units on their own lots. This will protect our neighborhoods from encroachment by land speculators as well. This approach allows ADUs, tiny homes, or lot splits, and addresses multi-generational housing needs for our aging parents. An ADU will give my in-laws dignity and closeness, but with space for our five children. ASU students will continue renting new downtown luxury high-rises. However, ADU rentals in our neighborhoods will instead attract young workforce.
Mr. Williams, unfortunately, your time's up. I'm sorry.
Thank you for allowing me to share my views.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Next speaker I have is virtual also, Joseph Mitchell. Is Joseph in the queue?
He is.
Hi.
Hi, Mr. Mitchell, could you please state your name and place of residence, and you have three minutes?
Hi, my name is Joseph Mitchell. I live on Guadalupe and McClintock. I'm really into housing politics mainly because I worked at Changing Hands for a while, and I was deeply involved, at least within the community or within a community that I know the city council believes exists, and so did all of my coworkers. And I was one of three people that lived in Tempe. Everybody else could not really afford to live in Tempe. I think by the time I ended, it was like five or six among 30 employees. So when I hear words like "the residents don't want high-density housing in South Tempe," it ignores every single grocery worker or retail worker or restaurant worker or anybody who works there. They serve the community 30 to 40 to 50 hours a week, and they need housing there, and they don't have it. And unless we actually have affordable housing on every single street corner, every single street corner, it's just not going to work. And I oppose the general plan because it doesn't do that. It doesn't even come close to doing that. And we really, really, really desperately need not high-density housing. Not going to get 20-story buildings on Warner and McClintock or on Warner and Rural. We're going to get like maybe a four-story building, like an eightplex or something small that's within a neighborhood. It's going to be more affordable. You'll get a lot of housing that fits within neighborhoods, and it will work. And it will work for the people who work in Tempe. And they don't currently live there because they have been priced out for the last 30 to 40 years. So in essence, we need to build housing, and we need to build lots of different types of housing, south of baseline especially, so that we can actually provide for the community members that don't always get a voice in these kinds of meetings. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is also virtual. Hopefully, I pronounced the name correctly, Robert Wingyard. Is Robert in the queue? Okay, Robert, if you can unmute. Robert, if you could hear me, if you can unmute and speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now. Please state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Robert Wingyard. Good evening, council members, mayor, vice mayor. I'm speaking tonight because I really care about quality of life, historical significance of our community. We are at a crossroads... Excuse me, I'm a little flustered. We are at a crossroads and have the opportunity to create and reinforce significant outcomes and guests to our community. Among those outcomes are preserving, restoring, and creating artistic, historic, and economic connections to our city. Sadly, we have lost most of our historic frontier legacy and are on the verge of losing our mid-century modern structures. Tempe has architecture and neighborhoods that are excellent examples of mid-century modern architecture. Denell Plaza is a prime example of this historic movement. Preserving and enhancing the existing art, music venues, restaurants, and small local businesses is a win for all of Tempe. Denell Plaza has played a significant part in local music history. In the 80s, it was the hub to skate punk music, new wave music, and country music. Local artists like JFA, Jodie Foster's Army, Gentleman After Dark, and the Jensen's played there. That tradition has continued to this day thanks to the room, to the Yucca Tap Room, a neighborhood and indeed a valley-wide music venue destination. Denell Plaza also has an historic connection to the competitive skateboarding sports world. It was one of the first locations where skaters honed their skills and displayed their talents in an empty swimming pool, a prototype for future skate parks which are now ubiquitous in our communities. The plaza could easily incorporate green space, affordable housing units, and art studios continuing the legacy of creative expression. These types of areas are what give a community its soul and lead to the way for a sustainable and qualitative growth. ASU professor Elena Roki has been working and inspiring local citizens to see the beauty and possibilities that is Denell Plaza. Denell has the opportunity to be a creative hub in the future of our city. Please think carefully when developing our diamonds in the rough. There are so much more to communities and economic growth. Take in consideration all these factors and watch out for all the greed that is around us. I do believe that we do need more affordable housing, and I believe we have many spaces to do that. A wonderful thing would be a long park connecting Kiwanis Park all the way to downtown along the railroad tracks, which would be fairly simple to do, and I think it was talked about earlier. But thank you very much for letting me express my opinion, and good night.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Next speaker I have is Jana Granillo. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hello, all. Good evening, council, mayor, staff. Jana Granillo, I live in Meyer Park neighborhood in Tempe, Arizona. I'm going to read from my email that I sent you all today. Dear Mayor and City Council, I serve on the Community Work Group for Tempe Tomorrow 2050, and I have a perspective to share given that experience. My recall on the CWG meetings is that most of the time was spent on the narrative. The narrative overall is thoughtful and it's good. I attended some community meetings of the draft which resulted in changes to the draft map up to the time of the DRC meetings. Changes were done to the draft given the pushback from those meetings. Given the controversy in land use maps, I recommend that the plan go to a vote by the city in two parts. One, land use, and two, narrative. In addition to a separate vote, considering the results of the Coyote vote, I think another approach to the land use decisions should be considered. For the requests for land use and related that are in process now, decisions should be made based on the principles and the development and the narrative of 2050 until another approach can be developed. Noteworthy was the pushback from the public. The majority of people who attended the community meetings I attended were expressing a mix of emotions from serious concern to outrage regarding density of maps. Most were concerned about the increase in density in their neighborhoods, surround, and loss of character and protection in the historical, cultural areas. Comparisons were made to densely populated cities with all their failings. Also expressed by some of the community members was the concern that density was the answer to solving key issues. And those opposing density were opposing those key issues and rejecting them personally or the youth. To be clear, an opposition to some or parts of the land use does not oppose opportunities for all or environmental responsibility. I think it's important to consider what this plan is and is not. It is not the single solution to climate problems, affordability, essential workforce. It is my hope that the mayor and council take a comprehensive approach to each one of these issues. I would also like to see an approach to community meetings, especially land use meetings, that gather feedback similar to a mediation so as not to pit us against them for the eventual outcome. We need leadership in a plan that works with government, the residents, and the economy and has built-in processes that allow for change and flexibility. I have other thoughts. We'll see how my time goes here. Demographics, the growth estimates that we have do not give us details about the people who are predicted to live here, such as age, income, work, status, that sort of thing. Changes, the way we work, go to school, environmental, extreme heat conditions. I have written you all, and I think you'll probably hear my other concerns from other people that are here today. And if I could leave this with you all.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much for serving.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. The next speaker I have this evening is Susan Conti. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Susan Conti. I've been a resident of Tempe for over... Over, thank you, over 30...
I have the same issue.
Over 30 years, and previous to that, I was a student at ASU, so I've been here a long time. We went to the last planning meeting for 2050. When we left our house last month to attend the Planning Commission meeting, our car temperature gauge read 115. When we arrived at City Hall, the gauge had gone up to 121. The urbanization proposed for Tempe will only serve to make living here more uncomfortable. In addition, downtown Tempe has lost its original charm as a college town. If you have gone downtown recently, it looks dark and claustrophobic. We should not compare ourselves to other large urban areas. We should keep the suburban feel which makes this community attractive to families and small business. It is highly disputed that CO2 contributes to global warming. All it does is provide necessary food for plants. The sun dictates the climate cycles that have been going on since the birth of the planet. The chart on the next page was provided by the Radical Climate Change Deniers at the Environmental Protection Agency. That's a little tongue-in-cheek. The elephant in the room is ASU, and it's been growing like kudzu both horizontally and vertically. While they have been adding solar throughout campus, the loss of open space more than makes up for any benefits. The 2050 plan expects an expansion of population to 250,000. The only way to do that is to build up. Otherwise, there just isn't the room to add that many people. The 2050 plan was big on 20-minute cities. For those in attendance that think more people will get around on bikes, I can point to the bike paths added to McClintock Drive a few years ago. We do see an occasional bike using the lanes, probably about one for every 1,000 cars. It was brought up in the meeting last month that other cities worldwide were adopting similar plans. Didn't your mother ever say to you, "If your friends are going to jump off a cliff, don't follow them"? Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have this evening is Ann Till. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hello, I'm Ann Till, Tempe resident, 2050 Working Group member and neighborhood chair. My first item is about population and job numbers. Those shown don't provide demographics. The 2050 land use map throws mixed use and high-density arbitrarily in with no justification of demographics. Let's see real numbers showing demographics, then show us which housing is going to meet which need. COVID and increased heat have changed the world such that previous trends won't extrapolate into the future. Second topic is what is Tempe's current culture? Just take a drive north of the railroad to see the urban core areas. Once high-density starts on the main streets, investors start encroaching into neighborhoods by tearing down multiple single-family homes. They distress the neighborhoods until people just move. South of Broadway, investors are already starting to purchase into abandoned homes. Third item is neighborhood preservation. There is currently two methods. A is the cultural resource areas, which are arbitrarily assigned by Tempe planning. Again, I'm going to ask to please make most areas in the McClintock-Price-Southern-Broadway CRAs. And will assign petition help? I don't know. The second way is to create a historic district, which is an impossibility, is it requires a hundred... 100% sign-off. That's why not many are being created. In regards to neighborhood preservation, odds are against residents and in favor of investors. An investor can purchase the home next to me, or a bunch of them, then tear them down and take their time. The city doesn't require any neighborhood approval. Why not? They get the city to approve a permit that builds a six-to-seven-story residential building in front or behind a row of homes. Yet, if a resident requests a simple speed bump or a no parking sign, then all neighbors must sign a petition. Does that make sense when investors can basically tear apart the entire neighborhood? Please update building codes, policies, et cetera, so that neighbor approval is required for full house demolition, and also to prevent perpetual building permits or many year remodeling. The past and future culture is item four. Remain true to being both a family and student town. Encourage families to go back to increasing school enrollment. The 2050 proposes zero new schools, parks are open green space. That's just crazy. Tempe can change its town by offering the right housing and the right spaces. Get the demographics. Five, other than Deb, please change the 20 general, 2050 general plan to reduce Danielle Plaza back to 25 units per acre. No unlimited density except directly downtown. Spread out the growth to areas south of baseline, and quit, please quit making high-impact general plan amendments after the residents vote on the plan. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have this evening is Deb Zajak. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, we have three minutes.
Hello, my name's Deborah Zajak, and I live in north, North Tempe. And I've been there for a little over 29 years, but it's only been the past decade or so, 10, 12 years, that I really started getting interested in development and paying attention to that and what's been going on. Knew nothing really about it, starting to go to the DRC meetings and would go to the half-hour study session before, because you really could learn a lot. That's where I kind of had the inklings when they started the whole reversion process where people who were buying properties and not developing and getting them rezoned, flipping them, and making a profit. And what I want to talk about is maybe not specifics about the 2050 plan, but the way, my observation and experience of seeing the way the general plan has been implemented and used. Going back to around shortly after, and this is an old project, but it really illustrates what I'm trying to express. Going back to when the 2040 plan was approved, and about a year after that, there was a development right on First Street, just west of Mill Avenue, and the 2040 plan up the density from 25 to 65. And immediately, well, within a year after the approval of that plan, a project came in at 105. And I was like, how did this even get past staff? It's so outside the bounds of what was in the general plan. And listening to the DRC session, the Development Attorney, who you are all very familiar with, referred to the plan as being outdated. And in my mind, I'm confused, I'm like, outdated? It was just approved. It's not going to be reviewed again for another eight and a half, nine years, which is now. And one of the commissioners, you know, she nodded her head in agreement. So it gets past the DRC, it goes to council, and you were on council, mayor, you were a council member.
I remember you.
And when I brought that up, I brought up the outdated comment, and I brought up that, how did this even get to, you know, it's just so beyond what the general plan was saying. The develop, the attorney addressed it as saying he's, it's outdated because they're not making a distinction between intensity and density. Like you could have 100 three-bedroom units or 300 one-bedroom units. So there's not a distinction, and I don't know if this new plan does that. But in regards to being so outside the bounds of the general plan, you addressed me directly, mayor, with at that time, and you says, oh, you have to realize, this is a general plan. We have to take this parcel by parcel. So when it came to the densities and stuff we're talking about, I don't pay a whole lot of attention to that, because I'm like, guys are going to do whatever you're going to do. So, that's it. But I do agree by the, over on Fillmore and Scottsdale, reduce it, over where the Big Surf, we could really use more density there. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Phil Amorosi. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, we have three minutes.
Phil Amorosi, Tempe. I was a member of the Technical Advisory Group representing the DRC. I think staff did a great job and should be commended for all their hard work crafting the various elements with various citizens' comments. I like that they strengthened the sustainability language as much as they could, and I think you can make it stronger by approving the International Energy Conservation Code and codify the green building codes ahead of the vote next March. A few things I'd like to see, I'd like to see Danielle Plaza remain at 45 units an acre. I think that this can be an ideal site. It's a major transportation corridor. We can include affordable housing, mixed-use market rate, workforce housing, and we need to give the developer the freedom to do something like this. People always think the developers are the evil ones, but they could have the greatest plan. If banks don't agree to their scheme, then they're not going to get the loan. The same thing with federal grants, they want a certain amount of density, and I don't think they're going to give you that stuff if you're at 25 units an acre. We're going to have to go higher there. That being said, I do like the new 25-unit low-density category that the staff created, and I think we need to spread that around more down in South Tempe, because the, I still see a lot of red commercial sites that are just unused strip malls. And if we don't spread that out, the 92% occupancy rate that Tempe has right now is going to go up to 99%. We need to build more housing to get that lower, not higher. Finally, the proposed land use map on page 48, and also the open space map on page 242, shows green belt along the Rio Salado Lake that starts at McClintock and ends at Hardy. It should end at Priest. We should extend that green belt. You'll see green, but that green belt is actually the lake bottom, and that's not public open space. This way, if you have the regional park go to Priest, then you don't have to worry about the development that'll go in, going right up against our bike lanes and our pedestrian paths. The, that being said, I also think that the parcel that you changed back to commercial at Rio Salado and Priest should go back to 45 units an acre, moderate use, so that we can add more housing there, too. If we truly want to be a hometown for all, we need to have a plan that accommodates all the new people and contributes to the vitality of future Tempe. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker I have is Gail Graves. He beat the timer. Please state your name and place of residence, we have three minutes.
I'm Gail Graves, and I've lived in Tempe 40 years. I'm here to remind you that the people who live in Tempe have needs other than housing, and to contribute to our quality of life, I think we need more green areas, parks, open areas, and to be able to move easily through our city. A couple places that we currently enjoy are Tempe Beach Park and Tempe Butte, also known as A-Mountain. In the past, developers have tried to cement over both of those places, and the citizens came forward and stopped it. And I'm letting you know that these highly utilized, very popular places are the type of things that we need in our community. We've spoken loudly about what we want, and that's very important to us. I'm asking you to please stay with the 2040 plan and to not increase the number of units allowed per acre. I'd like to see you preserve Danielle Plaza as a community meeting area and an arts district, and I would like to see some of the Rio Salado property that's left remain green area. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Gail. The next speaker I have is Kim Gaffney Loza. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, we have three minutes.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you very much, I'm Kim Gaffney Loza, I live in North Tempe. And I want to start with giving my, my own opinion on increased density in the 2050 Tempe Tomorrow Plan. First, let me say that communities that don't evolve can suffer the same fate as we have seen in the respite cities of the Midwest. Density is a more sustainable use of our natural resources than single-family sprawl. I grew up in a single-family home, live in one now, and loved a garden, so I understand the appeal. There should be many options for many choices and lifestyles. I have lived in large cities with density that have strong, cultural, stable neighborhoods, and I have lived in the suburban sprawl of Southern California, primarily single-family homes that had little to no neighborhood connections or identifiable culture. I do not believe that density will necessarily destroy neighborhoods, but possibly add to them or create new neighborhoods. Density also brings in more tax dollars for services that we all wish for, and more customers for all types of businesses and cultural events that we wish to have. Next closest to my heart is our desert preserves. I appreciate Ambika and Jacob for considering and inserting desert and preserves in several of the places I suggest in. Our desert preserves deserve to be celebrated. They align with many of the council priorities: quality of life, strong community connections, sustainable growth and development, and financial stability and vitality. The Desert Preserve Management Plan that you approved to start developing will enhance these by outreach in the process, the attention it brings to Tempe businesses and tourism, improved air quality and mental health, as well as increased recreational and educational use. Therefore, I would like to request again, the Desert Preserve Management Plan be included on page 245, number 10, to read, implement the Desert Preserve Management Plan that incorporates the Hayden Butte Management Plan and the Discover, Master, Discover Papago Park Master Plan. I would hate to see this much-needed plan be designated to a shelf in coming years, as some plans have been in the past, with a future mayor and council, and when I'm no longer around to keep bugging them about it. The 2050 plan will be used as a reference for the 2060 plan, as the 2040 plan was for this one. So the reference to the Desert Preserve Management Plan will not be forgotten if it's included. And I thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Lisa Zyrick. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, we have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Zyrick, and I'm a 30-year resident of Tempe. I'm concerned about the high density that continues to exist in the 2050 general plan. Since Tempe is landlocked, the question we need to ask is, how large do we want Tempe to be without affecting city services and Tempe residents' quality of life? Just because we can build more large high-rises doesn't mean they should be. We need to have a balance. We had this very discussion at a Parks and Recreation Board meeting last year. If we continue to add residents, what type of strain is put on the existing city services like our parks? We do not have additional land available to create new parks. So the existing parks must meet all the needs, including those of new citizens. At some point, this does not become sustainable, and all Tempe residents will suffer. Two of the city's goals are quality of life and sustainable growth and development. How can those be achieved when staff continues to ignore the will of residents and businesses? In 2014, the first character area plans were developed to preserve the things that make each Tempe area unique. They were meant to reflect the community's vision for their neighborhood. These included managing growth, development, and amenities. The city council envisioned the character areas as a means to address years of feedback from residents who felt the city favored developers over residents. In 2014, city staff added high-density residential for the Discovery Business Campus in the Corona-South-Tempe Character Area against residents' wishes. When I asked the developer, Jim Wentworth, if he planned to add high-rise apartments, he said no. He makes more money if the land is commercial. This was removed from the final character area plan amidst the public outcry with help from the city council. Well, guess what? It is once again included as part of the 2050 general plan on the land use map on page 48, and in writing on page 146. By including high density where it is not wanted, it looks like city staff is not going to value the honor, value and honor the desires of the six neighborhoods that have adopted character area plans. Not only will they lose the amenities that make their areas unique, but all Tempe residents will also suffer because city services cannot support a new, higher level of population growth. It is time to value and utilize the character area plans that council asked to be created, and it's time to ask residents, Tempe residents, how big they want the city to be. Bigger isn't always better. Help us maintain our quality of life while balancing the growth and population of Tempe. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Ephraim McLaughlin.
Ephraim McLaughlin.
Oh, yeah? McLaughlin?
Yeah, McLaughlin.
Oh, it says McLaughlin, I'm sorry. Someone wrote McLaughlin on here. Sorry about that, sir. Please state your name and place of residence, we have three minutes.
I'm Ephraim McLaughlin, and I live in Tempe for 27 years, my whole life. The, we had meetings and earlier commissions for, for our neighborhood, and we had changes made, and it is for Southern Avenue, Baseline Road, and Rule Road. And we had changes for lower density, and then everything was going great, and then we reached to, I think it's the DRC, and most of the people that went and attended that meeting had said they didn't want the high density either. And it was pretty much, at the second meeting, it was pretty much like, we don't care what you say, pretty much like giving you the middle finger, saying we're going to go forward with our agenda. The reason why I'm against the high density, it, our sewer system here is not like New York. They're small, we're going to have to keep, you know, working on it, and it's going to cause us to raise taxes. High density causes us to be congested in our city, which means people are going to have road rage. Not everybody wants to live in a high-density building where they have no car, because I know you guys are, I think that's probably when your 20-minute city plan, and I would like the 20-city, 20-minute city plan to be removed from 2050. The state legislators are looking at removing that, too. They're also in the Prop 400, they are look, it's already, it's going to be on the ballot, and it's going to move, remove bump outs and street diets. So either way, it's going to be up to the voters in the county on that. I just, we'd like to see, talk about affordable housing, the food tax for low-income people, and stuff like that. If we remove the food tax, that would help out for poor students, and they'll have better ability to have food and, you know, be able to do their schoolwork and stuff like that. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Nolan William. The next speaker I have is Nolan Williams. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Nolan Williams. I live here in Tempe on Broadway and Rural. I know that it helps in these meetings to ask for specific locations, talk about specific things we want to see. Please upzone my neighborhood. Please make my neighborhood denser. Please add more bike lanes in my neighborhood, especially on Broadway, which does not have bike lanes, as far as I can tell. I've never used any there, and it's very dangerous. And another thing is that climate change is definitely very real. It is certainly a real and true fact about the world around us, but I want to get into the main meat of my comment. So I'm going to tell a story about a fictional person who is based on a conglomeration of people I know and circumstances that I know to be true. I'm going to talk about processes, specific processes, that exist that anyone in this situation would have to go through. And I'm going to talk about the real-life consequences of the way that the system we have works now. The names are changed. The financial numbers are similar. I'll mention a couple. They're based on real things that I've heard. So we have a contractor who is the son of immigrants. He works mostly with businesses owned by Spanish-speaking immigrants. His name is Joaquin. Joaquin got his start doing plywood and plaster and some painting here and there, but now he just started working as a contractor. He has a lot of businesses that he works with. He works with framers, and he works with concrete layers, and he works with tradesmen, union people, non-union people. He works with who he can work with. He likes to work with union people because they have better quality, let's face it. Joaquin looks around, and he sees that in his neighborhood, there is a strip mall that is not really being very well-used. There's a lot of vacancies, and when he goes to the tax website, he sees that the land values appraised for this commercial strip mall is very, very low. The parking lot's almost always empty. He thinks this would be a really nice place for this thing I've heard about called missing middle housing. Missing middle housing, some of you have heard, is housing that is four, five, maybe six stories tall. Sometimes it's six plexes, sometimes they're narrow, sometimes they're long. He's interested in making something like this. So the first hurdle that he reaches, specifically in the city of Tempe, is that you have to commit a site plan and a zoning change at the same meeting. That is a lot of money, and it is very expensive. It is a very big and expensive gamble that someone has to take, but he takes that expensive gamble. He's saved a lot of money. He raises some money from his other people he works with. He's like, I'm going to start developing. I want to be a low-scale, down-to-earth developer. And he tries to make some housing. He has heard about people he knows in Houston, where they have form-based code, where they can new-build, I believe, two-bedroom apartments, completely new, sprinkled, everything you want to see, for $900 a month for two bedrooms, right? This is a place where you can build it cheap, and you can build affordable for the working class or for people just barely above the working class, and this is something that he wants to do. And so he goes out, and he tries to do this, and the main hurdle that he reaches is a public comment session. He sees that there are a lot of people who have shown up, and they really, really hate the idea of what he has to say. He sees a room full of white faces that say, we don't want to change in the character of our neighborhood, and if you look at the map of that neighborhood, it is racially segregated.
Give you 15 more seconds. Just let him go.
There's a lot of hurdles that Joaquin runs up to. We should not be putting those hurdles in people's way. People don't like big, scary developers. We should get small developers. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker I have is Samuel Theel. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Samuel Theel. I live in Daly Park, and I want to live in the city of Tempe. And I'm one of the young people who went to college, graduated ASU, and now I am starting my career as a teacher in this city. But I'm renting out of a house that is 70 years old. It is rundown, but I have a girlfriend, who hopefully we're in it for the long run. And I want to settle down here, and I want to have a family here. But a lot of the changes to this general plan, it was amazing when it first started, but all of these downzonings and especially the CRA additions really scare me about if I am one welcome here or if there's even going to be housing for me. Because when I pick a place that I want to settle down, I want there to be not only enough room for me, but for maybe my mom, if she needs to live with me or live near me, or my friends and my family. And it feels like every time we take away a little bit of density or we add another CRA, that there will not be enough room for me or other young families to move into Tempe. Thank you, Council.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Karen Gitlis. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Karen Gitlis, excuse me, Karen Gitlis, and I live in North Tempe. There are great ideas in this draft general plan and the discussions of open space, cultural amenities, neighborhoods, sustainability, resilience, and more. I am also excited to see recognition and planning for a downtown historic core. This has been a long time coming, and the history and prehistory community applaud you on it. I am concerned to see, no, I wanted to say, I hope that we keep CRAs, cultural resource areas. This is one of the few tools Tempe has to encourage historic preservation. I am concerned to see a rush to density and develop more, to densify and develop more multifamily housing structures of greater heightened density than I have ever seen in aggregate in a Tempe general plan draft going back to GP 2020 and 1989. The proposed land-use map has been a focal point for criticism since the early May release of GP 2050 in its first iteration. Since then, plan watchers have seen some decrease in density intensification as requested. I believe that many of us want to see the densification areas removed entirely from the land-use map. The development community would simply propose and build as they do now unless driven by plan pattern without the built-in rush to develop that is codified into this general plan draft. Please remove the densification areas from the land-use draft map or revert to use of the GP 2040 land-use map. The land-use map is, in its current form, would be an enticement to developers. Housing built on this potential timeline would legally have to be market-rate or more expensive, luxury housing, unless it was funded by the city. Workforce housing, which we so desperately need in Tempe, would be little to none based on legislative prerogative. It would be unconscionable to build this many housing units without an equivalent amount of housing build for the people that need it the most. Please replace the land-use draft map with the 2040 land-use map or remove all density intensification areas on the draft map for easy passage of this plan by the community. Also, last word, we would do something fabulous, we should do something fabulous with Donnell Plaza. This is our arts and music and culture jewel in the raw. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Lane Caraway. I just saw him walk out the back. Did he?
He had to go get something.
Oh, okay. I'll come back to him. I was just, I was like, he's next, but I didn't want to interrupt Karen, so. Let's see, then I will move on to the next speaker, and I'll come back to Mr. Caraway. The next speaker is Jack Ketchum. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jack Ketchum. I'm a resident of Tempe. I've lived here for nine years and just bought my first home with my fiancee two years ago. And I just wanted to call your attention to the dual crises that we're facing right now. That's the housing crisis and climate change. And thankfully, we have a tool that can help solve both of these problems, or at least make progress towards them, and that is increasing density in Tempe. I support the general plan, but I am sad to see the mixed-use areas be taken out of some parts of our city. And I just wanted to advocate for adding in these mixed-use development areas along our arterial roads. They are where we can best take advantage of the existing transit that we have along the arterials. And yeah, I mean, just make more room for the young families in Tempe. The median age is 30 in Tempe, and most people, most of our friends that we went to school with here at ASU have had to move away to far-flung parts of the valley because they just can't afford to be in Tempe. And that is, you know, not what we want as a city. We want to be able to capture as many ASU graduates and, you know, teachers and whoever else wants to live here, and that'll just make us a more vibrant city. So I just urge you to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Stephen Gerner. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Mayor, Council, staff, thank you guys so much for your service. It really is a privilege and a pleasure to be here today. My name's Stephen Gerner. I own a house in the Farmers Art District. I own a small business in South Tempe, Squares Bakery, and I am also president of Tempe Bicycle Action Group. We're a bicycle advocacy nonprofit. First off, I want to address the transit and circulation plan in the general plan. We fully endorse and support it, Tempe Bicycle Action Group. It is wonderful vision, and it's the smart policy that this city needs for our future growth. So we're very excited to see that and very excited to see what the transportation master plan will evolve into next year. In terms of density, though, as a small business owner, I am very disappointed to see these mixed-use areas revert back to commercial in this plan. My workers and I deserve a place to live where we work, and the fact is, we can't afford it. You know, we're bakers. We make a lot of dough, but we don't make a lot of dough. We love what we do, but it's a passion.
I see what you just did there, so.
But we all deserve to live in a place that we work, and we can't afford it. It is so difficult, and the first step here is building actual housing. Let's get the affordable housing. We definitely want that, but the first step is to build something. As Tempe Bicycle Action Group, when we have more dense housing, we can create better transit networks, more accessible networks, and make sure that people can live close to where they work, so we don't have to actually have as much traffic on the roads. And as a homeowner, I want increased density. It allows for better city services, and my individual tax bill drops because we can provide services a lot more efficiently. So I hope that we'll have a revision, and all of these mixed-use areas that were dropped in the revision can go back to mixed use. What are we talking about here? These commercial areas are giant strip malls, big industrial, or like office plazas. They're underutilized, and if we keep them at commercial, they're stuck to 25 dwelling units per acre. And simply put, those areas cannot sustain housing at that level. It's, there's a lot of areas that we want to protect. I understand we want to protect our communities, but we're really talking about a bunch of commercial areas that are underutilized, and there's a lot of space here. So I hope that you don't put this plan out as it currently is to voters. I genuinely think you're going to be declaring war on young families and working-class people in this city, but I see people here that can stand up, that have the moral courage to a small vocal minority that want to keep things without any change. And I see a group of people that are willing to step up and create a vision inclusive for everyone in this city. So I really appreciate your time today. Again, we fully support the transit and circulation plan, and I'd love to see increased density in these commercial areas. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have, I'm going to go back. I just saw him walk back in, Lane Caraway. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Sorry, I had to go grab and go because my blood sugar's going down.
No apologies necessary.
Lane Caraway. I live in Cavalier Hills, which is north Tempe, and I lived there for, coming up on 25 years, October, prior to that, five years almost, looking for a home in this neighborhood. Oh, is that better? Okay. I reviewed the plan. I have supported this plan pretty much from get-go. We need to see, we need density up in my area. We're basically a blifestone. We have so much stuff that needs to be torn down, redeveloped, to bring in new people, to clean up stuff that has been stagnating for years. But we, my spouse and I do support this plan, and we think it's for the best. I think there is a few wiggle room for tweaking in that area, for certain areas, but otherwise, I think it's a great plan, and I look forward to seeing what we can do with this plan for Tempe, and thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Nathan Harness. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
I live out by Creamery Park. This city isn't a collection of slowly-degradating mid-century homes. It's a collection of people. And I don't mean people in the way that a lot of NIMBYs here keep using the word demographics. I mean the people who live here, the Black, Indigenous, the people of color, the LGBT people, the young people who live here and who make this city something valuable, who give it character and keep it from looking like Scottsdale. Those people can't afford the perpetual rent increases we have been subject to for years. Those people can't outbid others fleeing sky-high housing prices in California. This is a desirable city, and people will keep coming to this city no matter what we do. The only cities in the United States where rent increases are slower than inflation are those with permissive zoning, such as Minneapolis and Chicago. And if we want the people who make this city great to be able to live here in 2050, we have no choice but to increase density. I want to stay here in Tempe. I want my family to be able to afford to live here, and I want everybody here in this room to be able to afford to live here. The general plan should be amended to reflect the recommendations of city staff and the Sustainability and Resilience Commission. The new cultural resources areas added by amendment should be removed, and mixed-use zoning, which was removed at Loop 101 and Broadway, US 60 and Rule, Broadway and Dorsey, Mill and Center, along Southern Avenue, at Baseline and McClintock, at Rule and Guadalupe, and around I-10 Elliott should be returned to the plan. Further increases in zone densities and reconsideration of existing cultural resource areas should also be made, especially those around where I live. Like my friend did, or like another fellow person out here said earlier, I want you to increase density around where I live. I would like more density in my area. Especially, this density should be increased around the high-demand areas, around transit, around ASU, and around high-employment centers in South Tempe and North Tempe. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker I have is Nicholas Weller. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hi, Mayor and Council. Thank you. And I want to start by saying thank you to staff for doing, I think, what, they did a very good job in trying to reach out and reach a lot of neighborhoods and folks in crafting this plan, and I want to express my support for General Plan 2050, particularly in its aims to increase density and housing and transit-oriented development and make Tempe a more livable city for now, but also into the future. In the past 10 years, Maricopa County has added three times as many jobs as it has added units of housing, which explains why rent's going up. Rent growth in Tempe in the last three years, according to Buick Charitable Trust, was about 29% in Minneapolis, where the city has changed zoning and worked with both private and philanthropic funders to build thousands more units of housing. Rent growth has just been 1% over the last three years. 1%. That's what we can do if we keep promoting more ways that we can build more accessible housing here in Tempe. Every day we delay building more housing is another day where costs push families out of Tempe, or worse, they push them onto the streets. We can't pretend that we can freeze the city in time and rely on our current infrastructure and our current housing stock into the future. The general plan needs to be a robust vision of Tempe that includes more housing, more density. density, and more amenities to help us move to the future. And I think the current plan could be perhaps more robust, but is trending in the right direction by promoting that density. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker I have is David Dwarren. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Ladies and gentlemen, and thank you, Your Honor. You're one of the few people that know how to say my name.
Thank you.
I've been impressed with the speakers that have asked for more density. This reminds me of a lifeboat that's supposed to carry 40 people and you put 60 people in the boat, the boat sinks. There's a limit to what you can do with a closed land area city. You can keep putting more people in, but that doesn't solve problems. And I think the mood, as you can tell by looking out here, is kind of divided. Yes, you've got young people that would like to see higher density and the established people that would like to see less density and keep our character areas. So what are you going to do? Well, the developers would like to have that density because they make more money. But if you fill the vacancies, you're going to have more vacancies they fill. It's like the egg and the chicken thing. It'll just keep going. It's a bottomless pit. You have to decide how much you want and that's what you want. If you decide for filling everything up, then you can do that. But the character of Tempe declines and those of us who stay here can feel that change. And here's a biggie. I hate to break the bad news to you, but the only way that you can have affordable housing in Tempe is to make Tempe an undesirable place to live. And if you think a unanimous vote impresses us, remember what happened last May.
Okay. Next up, let's see. Thank you so much. Um, let's see, I'll make sure I'm pronouncing this correctly. Trevor Malzuski. Hope I got that right. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. I think you're on a hot streak with the pronunciation, so yeah.
I thank my mother. She was a teacher and she did an excellent job with my reading skills, so.
Exactly. Yeah, my name is Trevor, so I'm an ASU student. I work here and I'm kind of in between Tempe and Chandler. This is especially important to me because I want to stay in the Phoenix area, hopefully in the East Valley, hopefully in Tempe, since it's the city that is probably the most aligned with my values and the lifestyle that I want to live. But unfortunately, right now what we're seeing is that it is becoming increasingly difficult in really the Phoenix area in general, but in Tempe as well, to do these things. A lot of things like public transit, walking and biking under attack. The housing is becoming significantly less affordable. And so if we want to fix these things, we need to have more density. When I look and I see the values and some of the narrative that's in the General Plan, it seems like we acknowledge that these things are assets for the community. And the original General Plan, which I support, went and fulfilled those things, but unfortunately we have gone totally in the opposite direction from this. A lot of the changes to lower densities from, and then also designations from commercial to mixed use are absolutely the wrong thing for us to do. Finally, just as a student, I want to mention a few personal things, once again, about specific zoning designations. So, you know, I'm sure as we're all aware, there is a very big student housing crisis, specifically in general, the vacancy rates are very low. And I heard that, I just might be wrong, but I heard it was 2% in Tempe. I don't know if that's true. Has a big impact for us. Student housing is also very low. On the corner of, on the southwest corner of Rural and Apache, there is an area of number of buildings, number of parcels that have been upzoned recently, but they're now at 65 dwelling units per acre. I believe that should be upgraded. Just one more designation to a no-density cap. There is a bunch of high-density urban core designations, both designations and existing buildings that are there. I think that this would be a very appropriate change. And I know that at least one of those properties has an actual sign-up that is slated to be student multifamily housing coming very soon. And as someone who is a student, I want other people to be able to get their education and to thrive in this city, which is why I would support more housing there. And I also have noticed that there are some 25-unit-per-acre designations on areas that are directly on Apache Boulevard that are facing the light rail into me. Especially seeing some of those site plans with low-density housing coming in there, that's just not enough. So I would really like to see those things raised. And that is it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Elizabeth Stewart. And I believe she's virtual. Ms. Stewart, if you could hear me, if you could just unmute. Let's see, Ms. Stewart, can you hear me? Okay, Ms. Stewart, if you can hear me, you just need to unmute and we'd be able to hear you.
I'll do another one.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, no worries. Try again. Okay.
Hello? Hello?
Ms. Stewart.
Yeah, let me turn off one of these.
Ms. Stewart, if you could hear me, please state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes. Ms. Stewart, are you on mute again? Can I try again? Let's see.
I'll switch back.
Switch back, okay. All right, Ms. Stewart, can you hear me? Think you're on mute. If you can unmute.
Hello? Hello?
There you go. You've, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Three minutes. Three minutes. Three minutes. Three minutes. Hello? Hello?
Yes, hi. Just, you just state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Elizabeth Stewart. I'm a resident of Tempe for over 40 years. I believe that Tempe must carefully examine the impact of each element of this plan on the Tempe Heat Island. Tempe tomorrow will not be very sustainable, desirable, or livable if the council fails to do this. I request that you keep the current General Plan 2040 maximum density designations in effect. More than 25 units per acre in the area south of University to Elliott, from Priest to the 101, will negatively impact existing neighborhoods and add to the existing heat island. Some neighborhoods in this area do not even have a park or open space for the public. High-rise housing may be appropriate near the I-10 corridor from Elliott South, where there are many employers and open space to support their population, and also in the north. Secondly, Tempe 2050 should require mandatory green building code standards for all new commercial and multifamily housing, like Scottsdale recently did, not merely encourage such standards. Scottsdale concluded that the energy costs for the tenants and residents are substantially less, the environmental and climate impacts are less, and the building costs do not need to be more. In addition, Tempe should require any new high-rise construction contain green open-space buffers with drought-resistant shade trees and plants and natural vegetation ground cover. Deviations from setbacks should be strictly prohibited. Third, Tempe 2050 should mandate cool paving materials and roofing materials for all new commercial and multifamily buildings. Fourth, the use of rock mulch and artificial turf in landscaping should be prohibited in all new commercial and multifamily housing. Rock mulches such as gravel or pebbles can reach temperatures of 140 to 170 degrees Fahrenheit, whereas organic mulches only reach about 85 to 120 degrees Fahrenheit. Urban areas with rock mulch can be 5 to 12 degrees Fahrenheit warmer than areas with plant-based mulch. Artificial turf can reach 180 degrees Fahrenheit. Replacing grass with artificial turf can increase the temperature 2 to 4 degrees Fahrenheit. We can't afford to get it any hotter than it is. Rock mulches and artificial turf exacerbate the urban heat and contribute to hotter microclimes compared to more reflective evaporative and permeable organic alternatives. Organic mulch or natural vegetation ground cover should be required in all new commercial and multifamily housing. The Tempe 2050 Plan should maintain existing residential units per acre at Mill and Southern to protect Daniel Plaza's longtime music venues and other small businesses from high-rise development. The plan should focus on integrating open spaces and supporting the Plaza's existing local arts and live music scene. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right, my next speaker is Darlene Justice. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Darlene Justice. I've lived in Tempe since 1965. And I've noticed there's a lot of young people speaking tonight, which I think is wonderful. I think you're hearing a lot of density from them. You're hearing from other folks. Some are for it and some are against it. I'm a gray-haired old lady in front of you that's for some density. Okay. Many citizens are stating their concerns with increased density. I'm expressing a different approach, a vision of Tempe north of Town Lake. My focus is on McKillips Road, south to Tempe Town Lake, and Hayden Road, west to Indian Ben Wash. That wash separates all existing North Tempe housing from this region. There is also vast open land east of Hayden Road on the SRP MIC reservation without any housing development. What a great view of the mountains for potential Tempe residents, at least for now. The proposed 2050 Plan indicates that the industrial Tempe properties along Hayden Road should be changed to industrial, moderate, mixed-use with 45 dwellings per acre. Big Surf is gone. Ice ratings, the ice skating rink is gone. Rich Hatch is selling his motorcycle business. There are longtime inactive buildings and properties along here. Industrial businesses within the region are primarily very old, much older, one-story buildings. It makes sense. Now is the prime time to really increase density in North Tempe along Hayden Road. It makes sense to have industrial mixed-use with high, with at least 65 dwellings per acre. There may even be places close to 202 you do urban. I was told that Tempe brings density to where there's public transportation, like light rail and streetcars. Tempe wanted to extend the streetcar to Marketplace when it was being planned. However, federal funding would not go beyond rural because there was no housing along Real Salado. Tempe and Mesa are now planning an extension of the streetcar along the Real Salado after completing housing along that area. Okay, folks, which comes first? The chicken or the egg? 65 dwellings per acre equals more transportation. The General Plan is for planning a 250, pardon me, 2050, including transportation. Tempe can increase density, housing, taxation, and significant development in North Tempe. Indian Ben Wash is riparian area south of Curry and Sing Meadows could add improved additional park space along with density. County island annexation and development is booming. It's time to continue to again consider North Tempe. Please make this change. Final one last thing in closing. I would ask there to be a review of proposed density on Scottsdale Road relative only to Fillmore Street, which was recently designated Cultural Resource Homes, which would be impacted with 45 dwellings there. Let's put it in, let's put it in along Hayden Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Justice. Appreciate it. The next speaker is Robert Moore. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
While we are far along within the development of the 2050 General Plan, many feel that the document still does not fully reflect our community's values and identity and is too focused on economic growth and development. I would ask you to consider three fundamental additions to the 2050 General Plan to help find this balance and better connect with fundamental community values. Number one, establish a new creative, cultural, and intellectual growth chapter. If you're going to lead as a city and honor our community's fundamental value of creative, cultural, and intellectual enterprise and development, this chapter must be added as a pillar of the proposed 2050 General Plan. Yes, this will take some work, but sincerely believe myself and others will work hard to help staff realize this highly needed chapter. Item two, honor the amazing work our staff and community have realized since the inception of the Municipal Arts and Culture Plan in 2015 by reframing the current public arts and culture element as public arts, culture, history, and library resources. Number three, recognize the importance of our local cultural heritage, environmental, and economic resource synergies by establishing a geographically-based character and heritage zone element within the land use and development chapter. The intent here is not to put more work onto the 2050 team's shoulders, but now Mbika knows I'm a real pain in the neck, but also hope he knows that I'll share the burden involved in making these amendments a reality, using existing 2050 community feedback if you decide to approve. So Denell Plaza, right? You should know my feelings at this point, but wanted to give a special nod to Roddy Hugh, owner of Yucca Tap Room, who is in the audience tonight, who has nurtured this invaluable local creative hub through the decades to the benefit of the community, and ASU Herberger Design Professor Ellen Arroki, who has dedicated her academic lens to exploring this cinematic place known as Denell Plaza and ironing the significance and value of its organic local identity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker I have is Robert Neil Miller. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. Just as a quick note here, too, I know typically we don't allow people to speak more than once, but there was a real extenuating circumstance with one of our long-term residents here, so she's got comments for someone else. I think you've got your own comments as well?
You know, I just have comments for Phil Yates.
Okay, sure. Okay.
There's a lot of comments being made here tonight.
Sounds good.
And I think that, I think we can, I think we'll be okay with just Phil's comments.
You got it. Thank you.
And as I indicated, I'm reading this for Phil Yates. It's actually really on behalf of his family. That's Justine and Eduardo, his mother. Phil wanted to be here tonight, but Eduardo is receiving hospice care right now and he couldn't leave her. So they contacted me and asked me to read this statement. I'm Philip Yates. As a fifth-generation neighborhood activist representative in one of the most gravely impacted neighborhoods in the downtown area, I am concerned about the 2050 Plan. We have watched Tempe change over the years and not for the better. Every five years, the city of Tempe pushes an urban core master plan agenda. A lot has changed even during the duration of the planning process for the new 2050 Plan. This includes a historic vote against the Tempe Entertainment District, which included high density. Our valley has also had monumental heat wave and drought records during the month of July and extending through August. We need to make wise choices for the future that are for the best interest of our residents, not for the city's tax revenue, and certainly not for people who aren't even living here at this time. We want and need some accountability from our elected officials, and we hope that you will listen to this message and will move forward with our wants and needs, for I know that many of you are running for office and you would like to have community support. This past summer has shown that the climate in our city has reached groundbreaking records with our lack of rainfall since March 22nd and the number of days that have been above 110 to 150 degrees. My wife, Justine, has worked as a designer, master gardener, and irrigation consultant for the last 23 years. We have noted daily how many trees around town are dying due to our urban heat island effect as well as climate change. Adding higher density will create more cubic feet of reflective materials adding to this issue. Creating a need for more luxury development will invite more people to immigrate to our city where we may have a major water crisis. city where we may have a major water crisis sooner rather than later. I think we can anticipate that a good portion of the city's budget in the future will go toward dealing with the effects of this catastrophic climate change we will continue to experience. We've watched our city grow over the last 15 years in ways that have been profoundly disturbing. Projects have been pushed through because the city empathized with developers who have convinced you it would, it would not be profitable for them to build otherwise, yet year by year things keep increasing. I am sure that you know that I have been extremely outspoken as a downtown resident. Our skyline has changed with little thought to the beauty of our city. Tall buildings are placed willy-nilly with little thought to perspective and historical relevance. Downtown Tempe is rapidly turning into a characterless block of high-rise buildings that are all the same size with..."
I can give you another minute.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
"...with little thought about scale, historical preservation, or aesthetics. We are asking that you, as elected officials, start standing up to preserve the character and the history of our city. We would like the city to move forward with an emphasis on affordable housing. Prior to offering giblets, luxury housing is not something that Tempeans want or desire. We are a college town. We also have many, many people who are working-class people, such as artists and restaurant workers. Listen to our residents. Our number-one need is affordable housing, so take your time and find developers that will offer affordable housing and offer them the money for giblets. We ask you to stand up and take some responsibility. Be leaders, for God's sakes. It's not too late for you to listen to the people who live here. Thank you."
Thank you. The next speaker I have is Thomas Zaworski. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Tom Zaworski, and I am a 30-year resident of Tempe. To me, this is not an all-or-none proposition, and that seems to be the way it's being promoted by one side who calls the other side nimby's. So, I can tell you personally, I oppose the current version. Because it does push this high-density urban core idea in areas that are already developed, that are not blighted, maybe they're somewhat underutilized, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it calls for high-density housing. Personally, I'm not opposed to a low-density mixed-use development along Southern, near Mill, but high-density housing, to me, is growth that goes well beyond what's reasonable, especially for the residents who are already here, who've already made a commitment to this city. High-density housing will only exacerbate the current traffic problem, and if you have not noticed, there is a traffic problem in Tempe. How many of you rode a bike here tonight? I can tell you I didn't, even though it's a chilly 107. High-density housing will only exacerbate that issue. I view the current general plan no differently than I view the Coyotes Hockey Arena proposal. It was resoundingly defeated by voters, yet each and every one of you wholeheartedly supported that proposition, and each one of you failed to realize the opposition. This current general plan is no less a developer's dream and a resident's nightmare. It, it basically crystallizes the residents' belief that we're tired of being ignored by this council. We're tired of the cozy relationship between high-dollar developers. We are tired of the fact that developers are given all this access, and yet they have no more commitment to this city than their own pockets. If you make the same mistake as you did with the Coyotes Hockey Arena, you do so at your political peril. We are, we residents are motivated, we're organized, we're watching, and we're gonna vote, and I hope that you scale back the high-density that's been proposed, because a moderation is what'll pass. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker I have is Don Hawker. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, and Tempe residents and citizens. Many have expressed concern at the density aspects of the plan. I have opposed the 20-minute and blue zones part of the plan at the last meeting. And at the development meeting a few weeks ago, the 2050 Plan personnel member revealed a key to understanding the plan. Paraphrasing, we can't justify sustainable transportation, I interpret that as streetcars and light rail and other traffic disruptive public transit, without sufficient density. So, the density isn't an accident, but a central strategy of the globalist master plan the cities are slavishly obedient to, regardless of the feasibility to anyone, especially those who live in this valley, but religiously adhere to the goal of getting the people to abandon automobile ownership, which is not the charter of the city to accomplish. I worked at 43rd Avenue in Buckeye. I can imagine if I had to deal with the 15- or 20-minute city plans. After seven hours of commuting, I might be able to work one hour if I was still alive. It's hard to determine the best description of the 15-minute and blue-zone plans, whether hypocrisy or idiocy. Either way, I expect the council to approve this, and so I'm only hoping that the public will vote no on this disastrous plan. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker I believe I have is virtual here, Corey Wittenwiler. Okay, Corey, if you're there, if you could just unmute?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Please state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
My name's Corey Wittenwiler. I'm a resident of Tempe. I've lived here for seven years now. I do feel like a lot of my points have already been made, a little, I'm sorry, I feel like a lot of my points have been made.
Mr. Wittenwiler, are you still there?
Actually, just dropped off.
Okay. I was, I was waiting to hear the outcome. Okay, let me, next move to Kent Dertle. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me talk to you, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Ken Rietley. I've been a, I grew up in Tempe, probably, you know, my daughter and her husband, and my wife is here, they're raising our great-grandchildren or our grandchildren, beautiful, you know, I'd recommend grandchildren to anybody. It's the best thing that can happen to you. So, that said, they're raising their family in Tempe, in the same neighborhood that I grew up in, and I went to ASU, and remember when I could drive to my engineering college and go up and talk to a professor, go to class? They have a beautiful engineering building there, excuse me, now. But that university also spawned one of the greatest things in Tempe in 1965, 10 years before I went there, and that was the origin of the Rio Solado project. And that happened to be ratified, I think, by the city council here in 1975, probably one of the greatest plans that was ever developed in the city. Nothing against anybody who's done something recently, but that was a major genesis for Tempe. That was created in the highest-density area in Tempe at the time. That was at the university. And what spawned that? It was grading, getting creative, young people together in a, in a contained area, aggregating them together so they can think and create. It was beautiful. They came up with probably one of the greatest ideas for the city, and I think that's a world-renowned project. Now, if we continue along this path in Tempe, and we don't foster growth in low-cost housing by increasing supply of housing, then we won't attract that young, creative force that will bring the ideas to Tempe that the employers are really looking for. Now, I'm in the electronics industry, and I can tell you when I go up to the Bay Area to visit our offices, those offices are half-empty. And I sit there and look around at this, the parking lots are empty. And you ask yourself, why, I ask the engineers, why aren't you coming to the office? Well, they say Cupertino, Fremont, Palo Alto, you name them, they're too expensive. They built laterally. They didn't build up. They didn't build density. These people can't afford, uh-oh, is that my time?
Yeah, you got 15 seconds.
15 seconds, okay, they can't afford the housing, so they have to drive two hours into work. The employers, I'm an engineering manager, I don't like my employees on the roads for two hours. They can't be productive, it's not good for the employer, it's not good for these people because they can't spend that productive time with their families or at work. So, we need to solve this, the only way we can solve this problem, take the CRA designations off of these areas which lock you in to a lower density that don't allow you to increase the supply, because if we don't, we're gonna be in this inflationary environment, people like Jay Powell won't be able to solve it, and we'll need to resurrect Paul Volcker to come here and really put some hard lessons on us.
Sorry, I've gotta catch you up, sorry. Thank you. So, I hear Corey Wittenwiler is back on the line?
Yes, I am, sorry about that.
Okay, yeah, no worries at all, I was, I was waiting to hear what you were gonna say, so...
Yeah, just a technical difficulty.
No worries.
So, like I was saying, I am really in favor of the increased density that we were seeing originally on the general plan. I, like I said, have lived here for seven years, I would like to live here for 50 more, but unfortunately, me, my girlfriend, people my age are slowly being priced out of this city with the rent increases. We aren't being able to keep up with the cost of living with the current wages we are getting. I'm really happy that people previously brought up Minneapolis with their approach to affordable housing. I think it's a great example, I think we should really be looking at things that they're doing to increase density without building strictly giant sky rises, which I think a lot of residents are opposed to. I am as well. I think we should be doing the missing middle, more gentle density, more townhouses, more row homes, more two-to-four-story apartment buildings, and that's really all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. The last card I have is from Trevor Barger. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. As Darlene said, I'm one of the old, established people who are interested in more density. I came to Tempe intentionally for that reason, I grew up in Gilbert. It was beautiful as a child, fantastic for me. They've now got a downtown that's really kind of hopping, but it's not my sort of place. I like places to have dinner 24 hours, I like the activity, I like the interaction that goes on with an urban area, and to do that, you need people, you need bodies. And so, I am a supporter of urban development, I love the interaction of it. It doesn't always have to be something tall, it doesn't have to be something monstrous, but it does have to have people. And for people, then we get in the strange category of what density is. And if I put five bedrooms in a single-family house, that counts as one. If I put five rooms in a, in a multifamily building, that counts as five. And so, it's kind of strange. Now, as a property owner in Tempe, in Mitchell Park neighborhood, I know that it would be in my best interest to say no more density because that's best for my property values. So, go right through the roof, as everybody isn't looking for housing, and my, I have what's in short supply. But as a lover of density and a lover of people being together, interacting with each other, I can't do that. I am a fan of the original 2050 Plan. I think it does a brilliant idea about where to put density within the town. I think it really looks at the housing study that we had and finds ways to put the 20,000 houses we're short, as well as the 20,000 additional houses we would need by the time we get to 2050. And so, I think the staff did an amazing job at trying to find, in Tempe, if you had to put 40,000 houses, where are the best places to put those? I know that that sounds like a huge number, but it sounds like incredibly expensive rent if we don't do it, to me. I'm not a fan of the changes, particularly in my neighborhood, the addition of more CRAs. And Cultural Resource Center, Resource sounds really nice, it sounds like a great thing, but it means no changes to zoning at all. So, on my block, which is a 700 block just north of Mitchell Park, I'm in a very urban area with all sorts of activity. The buildings behind me are commercial buildings on University. I love being a part of all that, I chose it intentionally, it did not accidentally happen to me. I sought it out. I have 23 restaurants within six blocks purposely because I wanted that sort of thing. My property has been zone, or has been designated urban plant, urban, sorry, mixed-use since the 2030 General Plan. In the original draft of this plan, it was also mixed-use, and in the latest changes, it got changed to a cultural resource area. As a cultural resource area, I cannot change the use at all without an entire general plan amendment. And while the house may seem interesting, and I don't have any grand plans for big high-rises, I do love things like the House of Tricks, and I would love to find a new house, I wouldn't mind that moving in right next door to my place, being a great place to hang out. But again, I can't change to that zoning category to allow that as a cultural resource area, it has to stay residential. I can't allow a bed and breakfast, which I'd love to retire in on the block, because it has to stay residential. And so, while it sounds very attractive and clearly would increase my property values, I beg you to please continue the original plan with the density that supports all the future residents of Tempe. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, appreciate it. That is all the cards that I have this evening. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council on item 8B1? If so, please get my attention. Yes, please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Hello, Councilmembers. Hello, everyone here in the audience today. My name is Brad, I live here in Tempe. I'm a senior at ASU, and I'm very much in favor of the original 2050 General Plan. I believe the, the, the density as allocated originally was appropriate. I'm very much in favor of the transit portions of the plan, and I'm very happy about the small inclusion of some, some, the inclusion for light pollution regulation. I'm an advocate for the sky and for our, our circadian rhythm, our health. I'm, was very happy to see that. I'm, I'm a little bit sad that some of the environmental parts of the plan have been under-discussed, maybe, but generally, I'm in favor of the plan as it is, or as it was originally. I think the plan as it is now is in the right direction, and I think we need more density here in Tempe. A lot of us are, a lot of us young people are struggling to afford to stay here in this place that we've fallen in love with, so, thank you. So thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council on item 8B1? Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Good evening, council, my name's Laura Mertik, I live here in Tempe, I've lived here for about five years. I just want to leave you with the simple message that density is why I live in this city. I make most of my trips by bike and that makes me really happy, it brings me immense joy that that's even an option for me, that my city supports that. You know, I made the questionable financial choice to become a public servant, and so the fact that affordable housing is necessary for myself and others like being in my city, that really matters to me. And so, you know, denser housing allows housing prices to come down as our supply goes up, and that matters for me, and that matters for others in my community, especially for our longevity. We don't want ASU students to leave Tempe as soon as they finish school. As soon as I got out of grad school, I stayed in Tempe because density affords me such a high quality of living here. Density matters to me for cultural reasons. I agree with a lot of the people who have spoken tonight that the, the culture and the sense of place that we have as our city is really important, but instead of wielding historic preservation as this tool to, you know, oppose density, let's instead remember that when we actually bring people together, we get much more of a sense of place. Everyone separated out into really low density environments. You don't get culture when people don't interact with each other. It matters to me that I interact with my neighbors in a high density setting. So I really encourage the council to consider mixed use areas wherever possible, to not allow valuable and worthy things like historic preservation be distorted into a, into a tool that opposes density. It's just really important for my quality of life here, and I wanted to let the council know, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council on item 8B1? Please get my attention if so.
There's somebody online that has their hand raised, named Deb Sparrow.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, could you see Deb in the queue? Thank you, Ms. Till, appreciate it. All right, Deb, could you hear me? Oh, there you are, yes. Could you state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Oh, great, yes. I'm Deb Sparrow, I've lived in Tempe for some time. I, I want to get to two things, there's, there was mostly the heat island impact and, and how serious it is. And, and that, there's a lot of, there are a lot of wonderful ideas that would be great to do, but we need to pay attention to what we've actually done and how it's worked out. I, I've been driving around between the Rio Salado and Apache, the, and building after building has been put in with no thought of design for the heat island impact, concrete boxes, no overhangs over the windows on the west or south sides, no setbacks, no buffers, nothing affordable about that really, because the heat produces ground level ozone. Now, there's people dying of heat, it's called the, the, what do you call it, they call it the invisible disaster. And we, we're walking around pretending it doesn't exist. I would love to be riding my bike. I'm, I'm, I'm not seeing a whole lot of bike riding right now, and we know why. We, we know that people can die or get very sick from the heat and, and that there's secondary effects from the heat, like the ground level ozone. Now, a pool, public and private, can cool you off, but you're outside in heat and the heat is producing the ground level ozone, so you may be cooling off, but you're still breathing that ground level ozone. We, we really need to incorporate this deeply into any plan. It's, it's, many people know that the rain patterns actually go around the urban areas where there is a heat island impact. I, it's, it's, I, I've been reading some of the things that our state climatologist has written, and, and I sent some of that in my email to you guys, but I'm not going to read off that stuff to you, but it's, it's, the, climate change has produced some increase in heat here, but the heat island impact has produced much more. And this has been going on for some time, but we haven't really done anything solid about it. It is very hard for me to imagine how, how I can believe that we're going to do something solid about it when I haven't seen it yet. So, you know, between that and, and watching investors buy up houses and not put people in them.
Ms. Sparrow, I can give you about another 15 seconds.
Yeah, okay, it's, it's, things just don't match up. You know, the ideals are great, but we, we have to match them up with the reality, we do not live in a temperate area and we are only making this place hotter. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight wishing to address? Yes, please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Mary Early, my husband's already spoken. I just want to stand in front of you and say, I'm requesting that CRA be removed from our property at 821 South Maple. We are about 200 square feet from the corner of Millan University. It is not appropriate for our particular property. The properties north of 9th Street would be better served as more of a mixed use property, a transition from the downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council this evening on item 8B1? If so, please get my attention. Going once, going twice. Okay, and I will close then the public hearing portion. That brings us to the staff presentation. So I'm going to call upon Ambika Adikari, our principal planner, and Jacob Payne, senior
You are good to go, I'll substitute in for the mayor while he's gone.
Good evening, mayor and council, Ambika Adikari, principal planner, and Jacob Payne, senior planner, we also have other staff, just in case there are any other questions. So we want to give you a very brief overview of how we developed the plan and what are some of the important elements in the plan. Basically, I'll give you a brief background of the general plan 2050, and also how extensive the public outreach process was. And we'll just have a couple of slides on the plan contents, you have that big document in front of you, about 400 pages long. And also the land use map that Jacob will talk about, and then we'll go to the next steps in the adoption process. So Tempe tomorrow's general plan 2050 is a high level policy document, it's not a zoning document, it's not a regulatory document, it is a policy document. The Arizona law requires that we update the general plan every 10 years, the last one is adopted, the 2040 was adopted in December 2013 and was ratified in May 2014, so we have until May 2024 to get this ratified, and because we have an election in March, to save the taxpayers money, we do want to take it to ratification by 2024 March if possible. And that's why this adoption process by this month is important, because we need 180 days between now adoption and the election notification from the ratification rate. The plan reflects the community's vision for the next 30 years, and it guides Tempe in terms of its land use infrastructure and many things that we've heard today. The, there was talk about character area plan and other plans today in some of the public comments, and we've also heard a lot of public comments to that effect. The general plan, although it's an overarching document, is interlinked with many of the plans that we do. As a matter of fact, although the general plan guides many other plans, it is also informed and it is also compatible and consistent with the plans like the character area plan, the master plans that we do in transportation and water supply, and also codes and regulations. So these are all kind of interlinked type of plans, but the general plan is the one that gives the overall guidance. And the public has shaped the plan figuratively and literally speaking. We began this process in March 2022, when the public involvement plan was adopted by the council. And then we began to collect the feedbacks and then release the first draft on May 5th of 2023. And right now, we're going over the adoption hearing, and then we do hope to go to the ballot in March 2024 if everything goes okay. Here is a brief timeline from that March 2022 to today, within the red boxes, you see that we have the DRC hearing, this is the first council hearing, and then we'll have the second council hearing and so forth. Here is a slide that basically shows how extensive we had done in terms of our public outreach, basically no stone unturned in terms of asking people what were their priorities and getting into that thing into the plan, and once we had a draft, also to get the input and continue to revise. So this is actually the last 16 months, 111 meetings, technical advisory group, the community working group, 477,000 mailing, social media and online, and 1,200 comments and counting. We went to many places in terms of organizing meeting, we also went to the actual meetings of the neighborhoods and in parks and so on, here are some examples, arts in the parks, ten events, ASU Housing Care, two events, and many other events, all the way to tour the Tempe and Unity Walks. The public uni, input process, although people had conflicting sometimes, conflicting opinions, and they also gave us their ideas from different perspective, but when we compile them, initially when we were looking for the priorities to basically draft the plan, many of the ideas also converged. And it is in alphabetic order here, basically from access proximity to accessibility, affordable housing, all the way to water recycling, water features, urban agriculture, welcoming community, all of these are kind of compiled based on the surveys and the public input that we had created. There were two formal platforms to gather the information and also to draft the plan. One was the community working group that the mayor and the council appointed, initially had 25 members, but initially, finally settled to 17, sorry for that typo, that's not 15. We met every month, and we also had three extra meetings to get the guidance and to also get the representation of the neighborhood and other ideas that they would propose in the plan. The second formal platform was the technical advisory group, it was really a large group, 70 people, a lot of staff from all the different departments, and also representative from boards and commission and our partners. That met twice every month. Then, even after we released the plan, the draft, on May 5th, 2023, we held many, many meetings, there is a list of those meetings, of course, I'm not going to read them, but we did go to many neighborhoods, we went to library, we invited people to get their input from the meetings, and finally to the community working group vote on June 15th, which approved this plan to move it forward with a vote of nine to six. And then two DRC meetings, June 20 to June 27 was the second DRC meeting, the, June 27th was the first DRC meeting, July 25th was the second DRC meeting, they voted with a seven zero unanimous approval to move the plan forward to you. So the general plan contains very briefly, you have that document, it has, it's almost like 400 pages, seven chapters, and 70 pages long appendices. The first chapter is introduction, the land use and development, economic development, circulation, sustainability and resilience, open space, recreation and cultural amenities, public facilities and services, and finally appendices, those are the chapters. They include the 20 Arizona mandated elements, and also six elements that we value, like historic preservations and climate change. The document is kind of easy to read with a lot of like color and pictures. Jacob is also not only a planner, he's also an artist, he makes it very easy. Most of the pictures are from us, the staff, maybe about 80% of the pictures are from me, but from many other people, including some of the people who spoke today, the community also contributed some pictures. It's very easily organized, there's a preamble, there's a goal, there might be more than one goal, and then there are objective and strategies, and then it goes only onto the level of the strategies and not below, because sometimes people ask everything to be resolved in the general plan, even when we go into the really high level of the general plan and many different elements, it's 400 pages. Anything else people want in detail, do get developed in other plans, like the transportation master plan, water resources master plan, park and recreation master plan and so forth. So that's how the planning works, this is really high level, as long as we touch the subject and give the really good guidance, that's what the general plan is, the name suggests, it is general. Okay, the highlights of the public comments, you heard many today, we heard many, many more in many different meetings and in the DRC and the community working groups, and just, I'm just going to highlight some of the things that we've done in response to what we've heard from the people. Initially, we had a central Tempe growth area in the document, people asked it to be removed, we thought that was reasonable, we removed it. There was a suggestion to include a land use categories of mixed use, 25 DU per acre in some location, that's now included. There was a suggestion to add cultural resources area near Alameda in North Tempe, it was a balancing act, some people do not want CRA, cultural resources area, some people wanted it, as a balance, we have added in a couple of locations. The comments about reducing the proposed density of 45 DU per acre on Denell Plaza, we have left it as it is because we think as a staff, it's a reasonable location, but obviously, the council has the prerogative on that. And there was ensuring of the availability of water in the future, this we have confirmed with the municipal utilities and the water engineers, we do have 100 plus years of availability of water in the city. We do have people here from water and other departments, in case there are questions later on. We were also asked to strengthen this, strengthen the sustainability language, which we've done, provide more affordable housing, again, we can only do it in the policy level, that we've done, and reduce the amount of the CRA designation in opposition to some people who wanted additional CRAs, so that was a balancing act that we have taken care of. Increase density to allow building more housing units, that you heard today also from many people, we have kind of optimized and again balanced it in the right location. People have also asked to spread the densities more evenly, we could only do it in locations that are optimal, transit oriented, service, and they are not in conflict with the location of the character, that's how we have kind of optimized the density. There are certain other comments that the plan has again addressed, things like lowering the densities, promoting and enhancing more historic preservation, emphasizing desert preservation, improving urban forestry, we heard from some of the members today that we have actually addressed all of them. And there was also a lot of support from the plan that we heard today from Culdechac Development, they sent us a letter in support of the plan as it is, Tempe YMB group supported it, Tempe Bicycle Action Group, who also spoke today, supported it, Tempe Sustainability and Resilience Commission, who spoke today, were also support of the plan, many individuals also wrote to us in support of the plan. I'm going to highlight a couple of changes for your consideration and what the staff recommendation is, what people have actually asked. One is the request for the portion of the Discovery Business Center, we had put some mixed use, high up to 65 DU per acre on the vacant land on the Discovery Center. At the request of some of the people, we think it's a reasonable request and we can take it out and put it back as it was, which is industrial in the beginning. There was another request for the removal of the CRA, cultural resources area designation on properties at the 700 block, and the property owner just today spoke about it. This was, I think this is reasonable from the staff perspective, because these were designated as mixed use in 2040 plan. For some reason, we thought we'll just kind of extend the CRA because there's a lot of requests, but I think this is a reasonable request for the council to consider from the staff perspective. And also, we also heard from a resident about increasing the density near the Indian Benduas and McLintock and McLips. McLips, right now, it's kind of industrial mixed use, up to 45 DU per acre. The request is to go up to 65 DU per acre, the category will be mixed use, not industrial mixed use, but still the same thing. We think this is also a reasonable request. We think this is also a reasonable request based on how it is located and how it is not really close to any of the single family homes. There are some additional requests. I'm not going to read all of them, which probably could be considered in future projects when the actual application come in. Or also when we do maybe a next round of general plan or any other plan and projects that we do. Basically, on Denell Plaza, Maple Ash, University 10th Street, that some of the people spoke today. And also on the Wilson to Roosevelt, there is a request to increase the density. This probably is not the best right now, but it could be combined with a mixed use moderate. Similarly, there were other requests to change a few of the densities upwards. That's something I think this could be considered in future. With that, we'll have a very brief discussion about the land use map. Jacob?
Quick question, Ambika, I guess, before we go. Can we go back a couple of slides to the changes that were? Yeah, these right here, the one right after, yeah, that one. I was reading through all these. Honestly, I'm fine with all three of these. I mean, my perspective is when you look, the Discovery Business Center, if there's not any request right now to change anything, I'm okay with that. That doesn't bother me at all because my attitude is when I look at the third bullet, where many of the residents in that area have spoken very passionately, you know, Kim and Darlene and Lane, and talked about raising that from the 45 DU per acre up to 65. I think that's absolutely the right thing to do. That, that's an area that for a long time has talked about wanting to share in the prosperity of the downtown and a lot of the surrounding areas. And they frankly, for years, come to us and said, there's a lot of property out here that's underutilized. We frankly need more development to bring in different demographics, to get the kinds of restaurants and establishments. I know for years, I've been looking at Darlene and Kim. They've talked about, God, we are so tired of the only options that we have up here being smoke and lingerie and pawn shops and liquor shops. And they, you know, we want nice restaurants and coffee shops. And they've said to us, the only way we're going to get those kinds of things is that we actually have higher density housing, bringing in more people with more available income to spend in that area. So from my perspective, we're not going to get as much bang for the buck, whatever, when it comes to the South. So I'm, I'm fine with the, the first bullet. I'm, I'm fine with all three of these. But I think that the third bullet, especially because the residents in that specific area have asked for that, I think that's a perfectly reasonable request. And it's keeping in line with the worth the residents in that area want to happen in their neighborhood. So I'm actually fine with all three of these. But Councilor Garland?
I just want to say, I've written the same thing on my notes. I, I support those three changes also.
Thank you. Councilor Baraj?
I too support those three. I think that I just want to give my hats off to Kim and Darlene and Lane for actually coming out and saying that because, you know, you guys all live in single houses and you're looking at not just, you're looking at the future, you're looking at what could be. And I just thank you for your comments on it. So yes, I can support all three. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Baraj. See, the question that Councilor Navarro was asking me was, I know Mr. Barger was talking about, I think, that second bullet there of the 700 block of West Ninth. Would that also cover the Ertleys' property as well?
No, this is separate. We actually have a map of this at the end, we can show it.
Okay, we can talk about that as we keep going, but yeah, okay.
So this, that was the second slide we talked. We will very briefly talk about the land use map.
Thank you, Ambika.
Jacob?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Jacob Payne, senior planner. So I'm just going to give a little reiteration about the land use portion of the general plan and what it does and doesn't do. So what land use is on a general plan is a projection of future uses and residential densities that are anticipated or expected to happen or that we might want to encourage in specific areas over the 30-year timeframe of the plan. So what a general plan land use designation does not do is it does not alter existing zoning. Anytime that zoning request is made, it goes through public process and comes before the council for a decision. But what it is, is it is a tool that'll be used for decision making when a rezoning application is submitted. And then a general plan land use is dealing only with the use and the density permitted. Other standards such as setbacks or parking or building height is all dealt with at a zoning level. So this is a look at that map. As Ambika mentioned, we've gone through a lot of iterations of this map. So this is, I think, the third iteration. So I want to make sure everybody's on the same page because I've heard some comments that might have been in reference to other versions of the map. So I'll go through basically what the proposal is for this. And the purpose of this map being that we, you know, we get projections of employment and population from the Maricopa Association of Governments. And we're looking for the, the best way to accommodate the, the growth that the city of Tempe is expected to, you know, experience over the next coming decades.
Jake, can I, and I'm sorry that I keep interrupting. I just have all these questions because we had so many great comments this evening. And so things are popping in my head. There was some, there was a conversation about the concern about high, higher density housing, kind of getting south of like, let's say Apache and Broadway Road. So we were talking about like Millen Southern or Millen Baseline and kind of areas of that nature. But what I was a little confused about, and I want to make sure it's like for everyone here and folks at home, what sort of proposed at those strips? It is not talking about Denell Plaza, which we know is sort of still being recommended at 45 dwelling units per acre, but the other corners, like, because I used to live at that corner for probably 16 of the 20 years that I've lived in Tempe were at that corner. So I'm just curious, like the northeast portion of Millen Southern and the northwest portion where the fries is. And are, what are those at? Because I mean, my understanding was those were coming down to mixed use, low density of like 25 dwelling units per acre. But that's not high density housing from my perspective. So that's what I was confused when I was hearing. I'm curious, is there still high density housing recommended for some of those areas further south? Or is really what we're talking about a mixed use, low density category?
Thank you, Mayor Woods. You're, you're correct. So in, in the iteration process of this document, we did create a mixed use, low moderate category, which is mixed use at the 25 dwelling unit per acre mark. For areas south of Broadway, with exceptions that I'll go through that are the Denell Plaza, Arizona Mills, portions of Elliott Road near I-10, and the Emerald Center off of Warner. The only mixed uses that are proposed south of Broadway are in that low moderate 25 unit per acre mark. So the mixed use that's depicted along Southern is that category. The mixed use that's depicted at baseline and rural is that category, as well as some of the mixed use that's shown on the south side of Broadway between rural and McClintock is also the mixed use, low moderate category. And then other changes in this map that are proposed from the 2040 plan is increases of densities and more mixed use opportunities where our transit amenities are most available. So that's along the Apache corridor and near areas where we have other transit options, such as bus transit. And then, as I just mentioned, the mixed use opportunities at the city's regional commercial hubs. So for example, the Arizona Mills is an opportunity identified on this map for mixed use, high up to 65 dwelling units per acre, as well as the Emerald Center on Warner is identified for up to 45 units per acre, the mixed use land use. And then another thing that I wanted to mention about the map is that we, there is no removal of any of the green on this map. The open space, the public open space is the same as it was in the 2040 general plan. In addition to that, we're not proposing to remove any of the areas designated as single family other than putting some of them into the cultural resource category, which, as you have heard, is a tool that limits density to what is permitted currently by the zoning.
Sounds good. Thank you. Councilor Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. There was also discussion on mixed use that was, that was, was commercial, was mixed use, and then put back to commercial. Give me an example. They, they said rule and, and based on a rule, I believe. What's an example of that and where?
Sure. So thank you, Councilwoman Navarro. The, the iterations that this plan went through in May 5th, when it was first released, the mixed use 25 category did not exist. So along Southern, for the, the portion of it that is between the railroad tracks all the way to the Loop 101, was designated mixed use at 45 units per acre. So based on our public involvement, we heard that that was something that people felt was too high of density. So we resented it and returned it to the commercial designation that it has in the 2040 plan. Then we heard that, you know, there's a lot of people who do value mixed use and feel that 25 units per acre is a, is a reasonable density, you know, for preserving the character of the neighborhoods. So we created that designation and added it back to some of those places where mixed use was removed. So I know that's a little confusing, but they were mixed use at 45. Then they were commercial. Now we're proposing them at mixed use 25, which in most areas along Southern is not a proposed increase in density as Southern Avenue in, in many places in the 2040 plan already has a projected density of 25 units per.
Right. So the, the great example, I mean, Southern Avenue, you said from the railroad tracks going to the 101, that's the opportunity of potential of, of new development going in there that it could do 25 units per acre in various parts, parts of that area is, is your example.
Correct.
Let me, let me put this up. So it looks like the Lakes area, the rule and baseline is in that mixed use, low moderate, 25 dwellings. Would you say that the product that's in there right now, let's say, the porch, the apartments that are there on the backside of the porch area, and then some of the apartments that are next to that, is that an example of a 25 unit acre kind of density? Is it?
Councilwoman Navarro, yes, that is exactly what 25 units per acre looks like. That particular project at baseline and rural that's there is, is 25 units per acre limited? It's commercial zoning, they have a use permit to do that. So that is their cap, correct?
That's, and I want people to get a picture of that because I, that's, that's a good picture. Thank you for doing that.
I've got Vice Mayor Adam Swell at our head up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Woods. Just a couple of things, I'll make it short as it's getting long tonight. One thing is, I agree with Darlene and Kim and Trevor. As far as their requests, I think they're completely spot on. And they're the ones that live in those neighborhoods. And I always appreciate the experts in their own neighborhoods. And, and that's what they are. And also Lane brought up some really good points. So I think that we need to follow their lead and make some changes on this general plan. And I also am concerned about the amount of commercial, commercial that's still being proposed. And I think we should maybe try to work on a little bit more housing in those areas to, to increase our density of housing and, and lower our prices on rent. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, ending with that, I'll give it back to Ambika.
Thank you, Jacob. So Mayor and Council, just in summary, there are a couple of points that I wanted to make. This plan is, has been a community driven and a forward looking plan for Tempe. It does provide a guidance for managing the anticipated growth because the Maricopa Association of the Government has given us some numbers in terms of what they expect, in terms of the population growth and the job growth, and also the number of housing units that's required by 2050. So those numbers are in the plan. So there's some kind of general relationship with that. And then this plan is much more deep into the themes of sustainability and quality of life goals. Climate change, extreme heat mitigation, green infrastructure and constructions are very much added there. There were lots of voices today about the International Green Construction Code, which one is, which actually is going in a parallel track. The plan supports that and highlights that and promotes that. The, this time, because now we have a council priorities, which were not exist, in existence in 2040 plan, we've made sure that the council priorities and themes are kind of consistent and they're also in, completely synced and compatible. It also builds in many of the other plans that we've done and many commitments that the city has on the 20-minute city, hometown for all, climate action plan, urban forestry master plan, historic preservation plan, affordable housing strategy that was adopted in 2019, facilities master plan that was also adopted in 2019, parks and recreation master plan that was updated in 2022, water resources master plan that is being updated again, transportation master plan that will be updated again, and also many of the characters, six of the character area plans that we've done. The character area plans go into details about building design guidelines and principles and landscaping. We cannot go into that level of detail in the general plan, but the general plan talks about character area plan and also empowers all of that. So all in all, this plan does what the general plan is supposed to do and also is consistent with all the plannings that we have done. Next steps, the second and final public hearing is in two weeks, August 24, 2023, we come to you. And then the public certification board is planned, if everything goes good, goes well, on March 12. And this is the planning team, and thank you. We have some maps, just in case you're interested to take a look at it. Otherwise, that's our presentation. I just wanted to add that some of the comments, if we really summarize the topics, many people that have written to us, they talk about affordable housing and homelessness, water supplies adequacy, and also the open space and the parks situation in the city and how the infrastructure and services will support the density plan. Those are some of the main area that people had some concerns. We have people from those departments ready to answer if they, anything that you have questions on the specificity. Thank you so much.
Sounds good. Thank you so much, appreciate it. Couple of other things, I guess, and I don't want to monopolize the time here. You had an opportunity to look at the request that was made by Mr. Barger about that 700 block on Ninth Street. But I know what wasn't contained in here is the request made by the Ertleys. I'd love to see if you could actually study that, kind of bring back a recommendation over the next couple of weeks. Because I don't want to, you know, make you just sort of make that decision on the fly. I'd like to, you know, at least give staff an opportunity to go back and look and see if that's a request that we think we can potentially honor. But I, I don't want to just do that right now.
You're talking about Mr. Barger's request?
The, no, the, the Ertley's request, it was 821 South Maple Avenue?
Oh.
Yeah. Just, yeah, I mean, just in terms of just, I mean, not needing any kind of a recommendation now, but just when we come back on the 24th, I just sort of love to hear the staff analysis of their request. And I appreciate them both coming tonight to make that request.
Sure.
The other thing too, that I sort of stuck out to me as well, Rob Moore brought up a number of really interesting comments as well. I wasn't able to write all of them down, but I'd love to see if we could have an opportunity to look at what some of he was asking. Because quite honestly, I really thank him. He was the first person who actually had a conversation with me when we were doing a walk at the Old Harkins Theater in downtown Tempe, the Valley Yard, about the downtown historic core. And I really appreciate him kind of bringing that idea and saying, if we're talking about a general plan, this would be the right time to get that downtown historic core enshrined in the general plan 2050. So I'm very excited to see that and thank him for all of his work. And what I really like about what he was saying was, I, I would need the next couple of weeks to work with staff to kind of go through some of the concepts he brought up this evening. But he's always been very willing to help us as he talked about with staff. He's like, hey, I have these ideas, but frankly, I'm willing to help you implement them, write the language, and kind of bounce ideas back and forth off before, so we can actually get to a place of agreement. So I would love to see if we could at least explore the concepts that he talked about this evening. I think those were very interesting. I, I saw like the cultural intellectual growth chapter and things of that nature. Those were the two items that were really kind of in my head. The biggest thing, and I mean, and I'll, I'll probably talk about this on the 24th, but I just, you know, really just want to appreciate all the residents that came out and spoke this evening or spoke online. The thing that really always strikes me is that everyone is speaking from the heart. It's everyone, you know, whether it's like, you know, the concerns about added density or wanting more density, both sides, when they're talking about these issues, it's coming from a place of everyone just wanting the best possible Tempe that we can have. It's neither side is approaching it from a perspective of, I don't, I want to destroy the city. People are approaching it from their perspective of, hey, I think that adding more density will make this a better city. Or I think that frankly, keeping the city a little bit smaller and not having as much population growth, I think that will make for a better city. So I just wanted to frankly acknowledge both sides of the, of the conversation here because I know everyone who's coming out this evening and we're all very passionate about these issues. It's all coming from a good place and it's all because you care about Tempe and you want to position it for its best future. So I just wanted to say thank you for everyone to come out who came out and spoke this night, tonight. So thank you. Anyone else, any other comments?
We won't have to have consensus on this, right?
No, yeah, I mean, I think the only items I would say, so Councilor Garland was saying, do we need consensus on any of this? The only items from my perspective that we would have consensus on were the three items that, that staff said they could actually make the changes on. But the other items that were sort of, no, we don't need to have consensus on those this evening. I know I wanted to go back and look at the Ertley House as well and talk about Mr. Moore's ideas and concepts too. ideas and concepts too. And, and frankly, some of the other, some of the other things that were brought up by members of the public this evening, I would, I mean, I know I'm probably going to go back, I know people think I'm weird, but I'm going to probably go back in the next couple of days and watch the meeting again so I can make sure that I was really capturing a lot of what all of our residents were saying, regardless of which side they were on, because there were a lot of great ideas brought up tonight, so.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, on Mr. Robert Moore's ideas, he actually gave us a lot of languages that is already in place and anything that else he's suggesting, I've already read it. There's, there's, there's no major issues there at all.
By the way, I keep mentioning his name because every time I do it, I know I'm embarrassing him by continuing. He's looking at me like, stop it, Corey, stop.
I mean, he, he wrote quite a, quite a, quite a part of the cultural.
No, I, I, but I really just, I, I really do mean, I really appreciate it. I mean, I mean, he brought up three really interesting ideas and, and seriously, that downtown historic core idea came directly from him and a walk that I had with him in the downtown that day with other members of our team and so, but I've always appreciated his willingness to really sit down with staff and say, hey, look, if I'm going to propose this idea, I've got some language for you that you could actually use and we can work together until we come up with a, you know, kind of unanimous opinion here, so.
Yeah, actually, for that matter, even Jana Granio's language is here. So many of them have contributed. We didn't have time to acknowledge everyone, but they have contributed to the language.
She absolutely did. Thank you, Jana. Appreciate it. All right, anyone else, any other comments, questions? Councilmember Garland?
I just wanted to say the same thing. I appreciate that everybody came out to speak and, and voiced their opinion tonight, but I also want to say to you gentlemen and to the other, the staff members, the thick skin that you have to have to be able to perhaps work so hard on something and then really listen to the values that other people are trying to give you to make changes and to make this the best that it can be. I really appreciate all the hard work that you guys have done and the listening that you have done. It's so incredibly important. I just want to say thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much, Jake. Thank you, Ambika. Appreciate it. Thank you for all your work. Once again, just want to reiterate, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for August 24th, 2023. So obviously we'll come back and have another hearing and see if there's more changes. The last item under the section is 8B2, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of portions of Alley Right of Way, lying east of South Industrial Drive in the southwest quarter of Section 13, Township 1, North Range 4 East, Gila and Salt River Base and Meridian County, Meridian, Maricopa County, Arizona. I swear, these are only added just to make me read all of them. This is also a public hearing item. Has anyone wished to address the council on this item? If so, I would be shocked. Seeing that I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? All right. Then once again, the second and final public hearing for this item is scheduled for August 24th, 2023, which brings us to item 8C, ordinances and items for second hearing and final adoption. Votes will be taken on these items tonight. The first item under the section is 8C1, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 3, Section 2-134 of the Tempe City Code relating to the Community Services Department by adding a new Section 2-134B relating to the establishment of Park Rangers and authorization for Park Rangers to issue citations of notices of violations. This is also a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? I was saying, yes, I want to do move to approve by Councilmember Garland. I think Vice Mayor, do you want a second on the Park Rangers? Vice Mayor Adams?
I absolutely want a second on the Park Rangers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, for that opportunity.
I had to get you in on this, so. So we had a motion by Councilmember Garland, a second by Vice Mayor Adams, and now questions, Councilmember DeVaro.
Just a, just a thank you, a thought, I mean, this is a long time coming. We're starting to make the steps in the right direction. Previously, in this meeting, we approved the two full time and, and one full time lead for this, for the Park Rangers. And I know this is talking about the Park Rangers and the lake and the Lake Patrol and the lake safety. So this is tremendous for us. It's tremendous for the council and we're starting to make those strides and the right steps. So I just want to make sure that's recognized. That's it, Mayor.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember DeVaro. All right. What in the world did I just do? Ah, there we go. Let's see here. Did we already have the public hearing? We got to vote. Then let's vote. Okay. Fine, Councilmember Hodge, then let's just vote, okay? I can't, I've got to get back to my computer screen here. All right. Vice Mayor Adams?
I just, I'm so excited about this. I can't even tell you.
I'm going to take, I'm going to take that as an aye.
Yeah, it's been five years in the works for me and I'm just so excited. So yes, that is up.
There you go. All right.
Aye, all the way.
Then that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Keating absent. The next item under the section is 8C2, I'm still laughing at Councilmember Hodge pushing me, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a water line easement located on the northwest corner of Warner Road and Emerald Drive. This is a public hearing. Is anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? Seeing that I'll close the public hearing, it's been moved by Councilmember DeVaro.
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Keating absent. Next item under the section is 8C3, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance abandoning an existing public utility easement on property located near Mill Avenue and Fifth Street. This is also a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? If so, get my attention. Seeing that I'll close the public hearing, moved by Councilmember DeVaro, seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Keating absent. The last item under the section is 8C4, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of a utility easement to Arizona Public Service Company over certain city owned property identified by APN 124-63-013, which is 1730 South Roosevelt Street, and authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute an easement agreement and related documents. This is also a public hearing item. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council? Get my attention. Seeing that I'll close the public hearing, council, the comments or discussion, or do I have a motion? Moved by Councilmember Hodge and seconded by Councilmember DeVaro. Please vote.
Aye.
That item also passes six to zero with Councilmember Keating absent. That then brings us to item number nine, current events, council announcements and future agenda items. Councilmembers may also request that an agenda item be added to a future council meeting during their allotted time. And once again, in accordance with the Arizona Open Meeting Law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. We will start this evening with Vice Mayor Adams. Vice Mayor.
I have no announcements for once, so thank you, Mr. Mayor. Enjoy the extra time.
You got it. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Next up, we're going to go to Councilmember Chin.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one quick one.
All right.
The Sustainability and Economic Vitality Council Committee will be meeting here in council chambers on Monday, August 21st at 1:00 PM. Vice Mayor Adams and I would like to invite everyone who is interested in attending as we will learn more about Tempe's water portfolio and a proposal for a green construction code during that meeting. Additional details can be found at tempe.gov/SEV. Thanks.
Wonderful. Thank you, Councilmember Chin. Next up, Councilmember Garland.
Thank you, Mayor. So just bringing it up again, this Saturday, we are having an event at the Tempe History Museum from 10:00 AM to noon. We're calling all Girl Scouts, past Girl Scouts, Girl Scout leaders, we are going to be displaying and the information that you would need to do your first Tempe Girl Scout patch. We are the first city in the state of Arizona to do a city specific patch that'll teach you about the history of Tempe, how Tempe runs and works, and the most important thing is the historic preservation of things that we have in Tempe that are valuable to us. So if you can attend, you can go to my page at tempe.gov/garland and you can get more information on that. And then the next thing I have is we have our Backstage Pass, which is an event that we've been doing where you get like a little backstage tour, places around the city of Tempe. This next one's going to be at Clark Park and it is going to be on Saturday, September 9th at 8:00 AM. If you can RSVP again to my same page, tempe.gov/garland. That would be great. We're going to get a tour of the community pool, the center, the public arts, talk about the public art, and it should be a lot of fun. So I hope you can join us there. And then I don't have a slide for these last two things, but I just want to say that we had a fire emergency where we pulled our emergency management team together earlier this week. And I just want to say, I went out to the facility where it's at. There wasn't a lot of people there at that time, but I just want to say it's incredible to see what our, our city can do when we are out to really care for our residents that are going through something that's really difficult. It was a fire. It shut down the electricity by APS. It was going to, wasn't going to be back on until about midnight and our city scrambled and we got a place that it was a cooling center. There was food, there were snacks, and we had incredible staff that was at the Multi-Gen Center. They're just welcoming people who were coming in the door. It was incredible to see and I'm really proud of our city for doing that. The last thing I want to say is National Code Talker Day is on Monday, so I hope you guys, if you want to learn about how the Native American communities use their language to help save the, the United States in World War II, you can look up Navajo Code Talkers or any National Code Talkers, but the day and the celebration is on Monday. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Next up, Councilmember Hodge.
Yeah, I want to, first off, by saying thank you to our new Chief of Police, Ken McCoy, our new Assistant City Manager, Greg Reese, and our new intern, Chief of Fire Deputy Duty. We had a phenomenal Breakfast with Burdetta. My council lady keeps saying 120, but we really did a count and it was 137 people. I don't think they were here to see me. I think they were probably there to see Chief of Reese. I said, I said Reese, you see, I didn't say you now. I want to make sure that it wasn't about you. No, I'm just kidding. I did, it was a great conversation, also along with Sean, Sean McDonough, one of the superintendents of Tempe Union, and it was all about safety and it was a great time. So thank you. And also we had a special guest. Our city manager came in and, you know, she kind of stole the spotlight too. So thank you. And my next one, so what we're going to do, people, we're going to go to Councilwoman Garland's and then we're going to just travel right on down to Breakfast with Burdetta. So we're going to hit both of them in the same day, so just come on down. And once you have that great tour, you can come to Breakfast with Burdetta. It is my birthday. We're going to celebrate, have a great time, and we're going to have a fireside chat with our city manager and we're going to have a great time talking with her. So it's on September 9th from 10:30 to noon. So you got two events to come, come directly from one to the other. It's not too far. We're in Tempe and we love it. So let's come out and enjoy. And I don't think all, I had a chance to speak to the veterans on, was that third? It was two days ago. And it was a phenomenal time. We had the spouses, the veterans. I want to thank Mr. Abraham for inviting us, inviting me to it, to speak. It was a great, we had, I got a chance to meet some of the spouses and met some of the vets of Tempe and it was just to support. So thank you for all that and that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hodge. Next up, Councilmember DeVaro.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Duty, I'm sure you're a draw at Burdetta's event too, so. You were there, that was good. What we got here? Hey, this one's timely. All right, we're going to have a housing conversation. It's going to be a, I believe, a three to four part series starting Wednesday, September 13th. We're going to be at the Tempe Public Library, the Ironwood Room. So like this discussion tonight, we're going to be talking about all forms of housing. Have a general kickoff on the first one and then really kind of get into the, some of the questions and answers and, and some of the issues that people have brought up over the years on the housing and what type of housing and the laws and legal and ramifications and the type of development and how development happens. I think it'll be a great conversation. It'd be very interesting what we're going to try to achieve in Tempe. How do we try to achieve the housing in Tempe? And then just kind of really kind of have a grassroots conversation about it. So this will be one of the first steps in a part of a series. Every second Wednesday of the month, all the way up to December, we'll be having this conversation. So I think it'd be really good. We're trying to expand on this because there's just a lot of information. We'll also try to get a, some speakers in on this event, just kind of from various top, from various backgrounds on this topic. So more to come on that.